We are ready, we're going live.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the regular session of the Anchorage School Board. It is Tuesday, August 20th, or no, it's August 18th in 2020. All board members are present. We have our superintendent with us and a host of wonderful administration and guests as well. Next up is our flag salute, and I'm going to ask Member Holloman if he would please do our flag salute for us today.
Yes, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Going to read the opening statement. The Board is honored to acknowledge that our community resides on the traditional land of the Dinana people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who've cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our virtual meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this Board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. The Board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. Next up is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I approve, I move to approve the agenda as it is.
Do you have a first and a second? Were there any modifications or anything by board members relative to the agenda? Member Hildy?
Thank you. I wanted to move to add for non-action, just review of BB 9271, our code of conduct, just to, you know, review how we present information on our Board. But I don't know, I could also maybe just bring it up under new business. I don't know what would be the easiest way to do that.
And we can put that on as non-action. Is there a second for that?
I second.
Any other board member requests? All right, we have an amended agenda. Do I need to vote on this, or can we just approve it as amended? I'm seeing a nodding of the head that says it's okay.
You can just ask if there's any opposition.
I think, and then we'll, I'll approve this and then we'll do the amended agenda.
All right, so I see no opposition to this one. To the amendment, thank you, seven yeas, zero nays, and we have an amended agenda on the table. Is there any, any oppositions to the overall amended agenda? Seeing none, here we go. All right, moving on to reports. Our first item up is our military report. We have a new liaison force. It is Colonel Delamater, if I'm saying that correctly. Welcome.
All right, thank you ma'am. This is Colonel Jason Delamater. How do you read me?
Very well, thank you.
All right, great. First of all, very excited to be here. For those that may or might not be familiar with my position, I just recently replaced Colonel John Carranta, who was the Mission Support Group Commander here. Lieutenant Colonel Ben Dainty is my deputy, which I think many of you probably have some experience working with. So, so I'm here, very excited to be here. Just came from Montgomery, Alabama, and I just got some fantastic news that the school superintendent, Dr. Bishop, is actually my honorary commander. So that's someone who I'll get to partner with and hopefully get her to come out. We'll shoot some guns and hang out with kids at the CDC. We'll do all that kind of fun stuff. A little bit about me, and then I'll move right into the, to the military report, just to not take up too much time. So at my previous installation, I was the Chief of Staff for Air University, which is the Air Force's, I guess, higher education institution. So if you're familiar with the military, the Army War College, the Air War College, that's, that's where I was, and I was the Chief of Staff for the Three Star. Lieutenant General Hecker was my boss. Some of you may remember him. He was here many years ago as a Colonel in the Third Wing. But he got a homework assignment from the Air Force Chief of Staff a year ago when he took over, General Goldfein, and he was told that the school experience for our military dependents in Alabama was a big priority for him. So I spent the better part of the last year or so working with our installation leaders and our local school officials, state legislature to work on things dealing with cross, cross district enrollment opportunities for families, working on the Alabama High School Athletics Association to work on eligibility issues. So I say all that to say that I've got a lot of passion to work on school issues, and I'm super excited when I found out that this was gonna be part of my portfolio here at J-Bear. So with that, that's what you did with me. And so we'll move right into the military report. The really only, the data point I wanted to share with the group today is, as you understand, COVID really kind of took a, did a number on many, many institutions to include the United States military. So what you, for those of you that have been with the school district for a while, you typically know that around the May to July timeframe is typically when the majority of our military families are being reposted from one assignment to the other. That's kind of shifted to the right a little bit because of something the Department of Defense did, which was stop movement. So we basically kind of put a, put the brakes on a lot of military movements because of COVID restrictions and health reasons. So what that did is it slid a lot of that surge to the right. So when we, what you normally would expect to see in the May to July timeframe, we're now gonna see start, at least here in Anchorage, happening next month. So the next 30 to 60 days is when you can expect to see the majority of the height or the peak of the, of the move season for our military members, both Army and Air Force. So I just offer that up as, as context for those of you in the school district and for our teachers out there, that over the next 30 to 60 days is when you'll start to get maybe a lot of questions and inquiries about enrollment and, and questions about the virtual curriculum and these kind of things. So I just want to kind of give you that as a data point for planning purposes, that the big, the big push is coming in. So that's really the only topic I had for, for the group today, ma'am. I'm happy to take any questions at this time if anybody has any. Over.
Thank you very much. Do any board members have any questions for the Colonel?
Just welcome. Glad to have you aboard.
Yeah, I was going to echo that. Welcome to Anchorage.
Welcome.
Thank you so very much, and we look forward to hearing more from you as we go through our school year. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have our Board Conference and Committee Reports. And first up, we'll start with the most recent, and we'll start with Board Member Marsette, and talk about our Finance Committee today.
We did meet today at 3:30, and our focus was on our student count and the impact that that's gonna have to our budget. Right now, we are looking at possibly about 4,000 short in our student count. 2,600 have not enrolled or unenrolled, have unenrolled. And so we're looking at the impact that that's gonna have on our budget for next year. We will talk a little bit later on about a resolution the Board might be interested in, and some of those things could be anything from changing our hold harmless from 5% to 2%. A resolution to legislative to ask that we use our FY '20 funding because '21 was sound unstable, and therefore it would greatly impact our funding in '22. So there's a lot of things to talk about, and it does impact the district and what we're seeing and how the budget will be impacted. At this point, I guess we don't have any real numbers until we do get those final counts. One of the other things we may ask for is two Oasis counts, so that we can capture those late enrollments or those individuals that maybe started with homeschooling and would like to come back into their neighborhood schools. So that is something we'll be discussing more, but they're, right now we're seeing a real impact to our budget. We just don't have the exact numbers yet, but we have a pretty good idea. So we need to reach out and with the help of our legislators in Senate, maybe help us with averting this crisis.
So that's all I have. Thank you, Member Marsette. Next up, we'll move to Member Bellamy to give a Communications Committee update.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So we met, the Communications Committee met on, I think it was the 11th of July, I mean, August, sorry. And we talked about several things. We, one of the things we talked about and we did achieve was a welcome back letter to the staff, welcoming, welcoming them back to an unusual, but exceptional, really exceptional school year. And so we, we were able to get that letter, you know, edited by all, all who had edits, and then we were able to get that out. And I want to thank the Communications Department, Mr. Brown and his crew for making sure, in literally a 24-hour turnaround, we were able to get that letter into the mailboxes, email boxes of our staff. We also spent some time pondering our legislative priorities, number one of which is our funding, and similar, you know, to what Member Marsette just talked about, looking at our deficits, but trying to come up with what our legislative priorities are going to be. We talked a little bit about the luncheon, whether we would do a virtual luncheon. Actually, I recommended a virtual luncheon, but we have not decided what that's going to look like at this moment. And then we had, we had updates from board members relative to their involvement with other outside partners. One of those partners was the Alaska Children's Trust, and President Michaelis did sign on to a, the heroes, the funding, a funding letter from that organization along with many other partners. So that's about it, and our next meeting will be September 15th at 4:30. Thank you.
Member Hildy, if you could just get a quick Governance Committee update. I know you had to shift your meeting.
Yeah, thank you for accommodating me. We haven't met since June, but we are rescheduled for this Friday at 10:30, and people are now able to zoom in to those meetings to watch and listen. And so those links I'm sure will be available online, and we'll be going over proposed policy on reimbursement for tickets and events, and the Superintendent Evaluation Timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hildy. And I don't believe we've had any conferences in the last couple of weeks, so we'll just move on to our goal monitoring section of our agenda. This is to get an enrollment update, and at this time, I'd like to pass it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And for those that are listening in the public, the goal monitoring section is generally about monitoring the learning outcomes and the learning goals for which the Board set. As we haven't entered into the year, the Board has selected alternate data to really look at. And so with that, I will share the present information with you. The data gathered for this enrollment update was as of yesterday, August 17. And as Jim Anderson, our Chief Financial Officer, shared during the Finance Committee Meeting, as Member Marsette mentioned, we are off, if you will, in comparison to our other dates that were approximate three days before the start of school in the past two years. So if we look at those data points, our expected enrollment would be around 43,000 as well at this point in time, and we are a little over 38,000. The question then comes, where are the students and what does it look like? This came up, and we will look at additional districts as well in specific outcomes, as well as students who left. There was an inquiry during the last meeting in regard to special education students that may have left, and so we'll dig deeper and provide that information for the Board. But if you see that there was definitely a significant increase in the requests processed for unenrollment, or those are requests that were actually came from another education institution to transfer records. And again, that, that process is not carried by an individual. It is actually from office to office. So those are official transcript, transcribed information, transfer, just for understanding, the school file with students' information actually goes with the student, the time. These are the records that we keep for statutory requirements. So total from Alaska Correspondent Schools, these are correspondent schools in our state but outside of ASD. And then, of course, students who are leaving the state or entering another district is at 520. So that's where that 1583 are derived, and very significantly different than the summer of 2019 and 18. And when we take a look at where exactly the movement is taking place, you could tell that our neighboring district is Matsu, 185, and we did make a small inquiry here to understand, and just from the little action research survey, not verified with an extensive study, families and individual parents that had worked in ASD, some of them did enroll their student here and pay the tuition. Now that they may not be driving in, some of them are enrolling in their schools in their neighborhoods. So you can take a look around the state. There's some smaller amounts of movement. And then, of course, on the right-hand side, we list the statewide correspondence for which we've received records, requests, and processed those. That's how we absolutely know where they're going. A key piece of information is the 2736 where the asterisk is. And although we have confirmed records for 1,583 transfer records, there are 2,736 unenrolled. So they had some indication that they might not go, but it hasn't been processed. So these are parents that may decide, well, maybe I might want to come back, or somewhere in the process, they didn't process it well. We've had, we've just seen some differences in parent selection of items when they didn't really mean to go there, but those potentially could also be enrolled or processed out of the district at some point in time. There was a large transition in our school district as well, which is identified below the line, that although these are, continue to be ASD students, they've chosen to do Family Partnership Frontier or Per Day or Own Homeschools. And again, last meeting, we spent some time and probably could talk about this for hours and hours, the nuanced difference between homeschool, a traditional homeschool, a virtual school, and ASD in school, but a blended model, because now we're at high risk and learning at home. So although these might all be some type of learning from home, the curriculum and supports and transition and movement from subject to subject are all dealt with a little bit differently. And so we'll continue to just educate everyone on those, those programs. But of course, Family Partnership Frontier and Per Day are already established homeschool programs. The next slide just demonstrates unverified enrollment. At this point in time, what, what we have for unverified enrollment, the 38,000 that you saw at the beginning is verified. It was actually a definitive touch in the program from a parent to confirm the enrollment. This 43,000 represents last year's enrollment moved over, less the seniors who left us, and our kindergartners who had not pre-registered. So it would be just those middle grades, not including kindergarten fully or 12th grade. So we had expected about 43,000 now at this point in time, expecting to come back to us, and as you know, it's about 38. The ASD Virtual Selection is a selection at the homeschool, but engaging in virtual school, similar to a Florida virtual, but it is actually ASD teachers that are supporting those courses for that virtual selection, and these students remain connected to their homeschools. And those are the data, and I'm welcome any discussion or, or questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Do any board members have questions specific to, specific to the enrollment question? Member Mitchell, I saw your hand wave there.
Dr. Bishop, the number you have on this page that you said was the unverified enrollment, had you backed out the people who have officially unenrolled? Or is that 43,000?
No, this, this would just be, that's a great question. This would just be what we would have had for expecting initially, our expectation for enrollment for this year, outside of kindergarten of kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just so board members know, there will be some more space made under the Superintendent Update for a broader range of Q and A as well. We just wanted to keep our enrollment update specific under our goal monitoring. One last opportunity for any other hands, for any other enrollment questions for Dr. Bishop. All right, not seeing any, we will go ahead and move on in our agenda. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Next up, we have public testimony. I will read a almost brief statement. "With the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, it has become clear from developing events in the municipality and the state that in-person testimony presents too great a public health risk, the School Board and district staff are taking necessary steps to allow remote testimony while continuing to broadcast and record meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The Board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. The School Board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony to sign up in advance for telephone and testimony or to email written comments by 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. These comments will also become part of the meeting record. You'll have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, a bell will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the Administration for follow-up." And at this time, I do have three people that are signed up to be speakers on non-action items. The first one is Daniel Kemp. Daniel, are you with us tonight? Daniel, I see your, your icon there, but I don't hear you. Are you there, sir? Okay, it's on mute right now.
Hello?
Hello there. Now we hear you. Thank you very much for joining us. You've got three minutes, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Daniel Kemp, and I'm a retired Army Convet Officer, teacher here in the ASD, and I would like to testify. First, first issue I'd like to discuss tonight is on just my dissatisfaction with the amount of, well, the altered or omitted Black history representation in our ASD curriculum. I have been in contact with senior leadership in ASD, and I'm very excited to, you know, work with them on making sure that our curriculum is correct and accurately reflects history, all history, and not just selective history. The second issue is class size. I would like to voice my concern about the, the size of our classes. As you know, from numerous case studies throughout history, class size is directly linked to student performance. If you cut a class in half, from about 30 to 15 students, any academic achievement gap will be reduced to negligible sizes. And so I think it should be a priority for the ASD to focus on reducing class size. Third issue, I would like to focus on is the amount of people of color in our teacher ranks. Right now, Black people represent only 1%, I mean, 3% of the state, 15% of the United States. Indigenous people here represent about 17% of the states, or 17 to 20% of the state, yet both populations each have only 1% representation in our certified teacher ranks. That is totally unacceptable, and I just want to let you know that I will be working with the AEA on various recruitment and incentive strategies for the hiring of people of color to certify teaching positions and to bring that population in line with the racial makeup of America. And keep in mind that when we increase the minority population of our teacher ranks, that will have the added effect of reducing class size. So it's kind of like a win-win situation there, if you really think about it. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I hope and pray that you consider these, you know, points that I bring up tonight, and just know that I will keep on bugging you until change happens. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Corey Ast. Corey, are you with us tonight? Corey, are you live with us?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. You've got three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Dear Board, as we all know, last spring, all schools across the country were thrown into a terrible situation due to COVID-19. ASD was not alone in our experience or efforts. ASD has many emergency plans. What to do when a pandemic hits was not one of them. The fall is going to be different. The ASD Board should be letting the community know we have confidence in all our teachers, counselors, nurses, and related service educators, as well as principals and ESPs. AEA members, our educators, in all their job categories have been training and gearing up long before the first day back on contract last Thursday. Educators have been taking the lead over their own professional development and are working hard to deliver enriched, meaningful, and purposeful online experiences for their students. I have some numbers to share with you tonight. 224. Between August 3rd and August 11th, 224 educators participated in AEA's Good Teaching Institute. 53. Those educators participated in 53 online sessions, including three keynote speakers and one guided reflection, all on the topic of online learning. 4,390. Educators spent over 4,390 hours of their own time on professional development and online learning. Those 224 educators are sharing what they have learned and impacting additional educators across the district. Here are some numbers from ASDSA from May and June. 1,384. 1,384 ASD educators participated in ASDSA. 48. Those educators participated in 48 different courses. 10,000. Educators spent over 10,000 hours of their own time on professional development. Your educators are rising to the challenge and working to better themselves. Spread the word. School Board members, use your megaphone and yell it from the rooftops. What's next? Additional professional development. Educators need time to work in their new online environment and then be offered additional professional development designed to better their craft, to capture their students' attention, and help encourage all students to be self-directed learners. I want to close with two humble suggestions. Please join the training sessions being offered to your staff, so when you speak to online learning, you can speak to best practices. so when you speak to online learning, you can speak to best practices, quality versus quantity. And number two, please join me in congratulating all your employees who have been working hard for our students and families. Our goal is your goal, student success. Thank you so much for your time.
Corey, thank you very much. Next up, I have caller Allison Huergen. Allison, are you with us this evening?
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can. Thank you very much. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at tonight's board meeting, and thank you to the board for all the hard work that you all continue to do to ensure the health and safety of students and staff throughout the district this year. I'm speaking today as a member of the Alaska Black Caucus Alliance for Change Group and as a local medical student. And I'm asking that the board continue to consider ways to support students that do not rely on the use of law enforcement. As you've heard in previous testimony, Black, Indigenous, and students of color are disproportionately impacted by surveillance, policing, and disciplinary actions in school, which has long-term impacts on health and well-being. Racism is a social determinant of health, and in order to achieve health equity in our community, we must work together to address systemic racism in education, law enforcement, healthcare, and many other sectors. While I appreciate the stated intent of the SRO program to provide a safe working and learning environment, and while I also believe that many law enforcement officers in the program are likely drawn to their career by a desire to serve their community in a positive way, the impact of the program must be carefully evaluated through available evidence and by prioritizing the input of Black and Indigenous students and students of color, their families, and community leaders. If you haven't already, I encourage all board members to watch the recording of a recent Alaska Black Caucus community conversation entitled Youth Conversations on Race, which is available on the Alaska Black Caucus Facebook page. And additionally, please continue to weigh the data which has been made available to you through previous testimonies suggesting that these programs do not actually make schools safer. It's important that local programs are continually measured and evaluated for effectiveness in meeting their stated goals, and that evidence and community-based practices are implemented and improved upon. Impact matters more than intent. Now is the time to critically evaluate the SRO program and alternative support systems for students, including increased access to social workers, counselors, healthcare providers, and others. And these individuals must reflect the diversity of the student body. To, excuse me, to close, I'll quickly quote Dr. Ronald Copeland, the Chief Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity Officer of the Kaiser Foundation. He says, "Addressing structural racism and its detrimental impact on employment, income, housing, schools, and psychological well-being is a formidable task and requires courage. Reluctance is understandable but not acceptable. You can't achieve true health equity without addressing racism. Thank you for taking responsibility for the role you all have in helping to achieve health equity in our community, and thank you for having courage as you do this important work." Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, that concludes public testimony for the speakers that we did have signed up in advance. I believe there is one written public testimony attached to the record for board members and the public to read. Next up, we have our superintendent update, and at this time, I would like to hand it back over to Dr. Bishop. I'm muted though.
Thank you, Madam President. In this evening, in the superintendent update, I wanted to provide more information regarding the school start plan. We don't have it as a discussion item, so I'm really targeting some of the questions that the board had last week that we were cut short and couldn't dive deep into in regard to that. And so we're going to really look at the decision guidance, how we make the decisions, and how we did make the decisions in regard to the risk levels. That was a specific request. I brought over some slides from the finance meeting in case there's additional questions for our CFO, and just to share again how enrollment and school size and the actual formula really dictates what resources there are in schools. Wanted to share the training and support, and then, of course, the implementation, and what does a day look like for a teacher, what services are kids receiving, and then finally speak to the assembly grants for which they recently voted to support some of the work in ASD, especially with students in regard to behavioral and mental health. So without further ado, I would like to move to the next slide and introduce to you once again Jennifer Petronas. And she is our resident expert, our Director of Nursing, but also understands deeply the implications from the Department of Health and Social Services. As you are aware, our nurses did support the epidemic in Anchorage on the inside, if you will, with our Anchorage Department of Health, as well as we have members of, our Chief of Operations, Tom, has assigned members of the team to the EOC for the city. So without further ado, I'll just turn it over to Jennifer so she can kind of give a mind's eye to the board and the public in regard to the decisions.
Good afternoon, Board. If we can go ahead and move on to the next slide, and I'm just going to explain the DHSS dashboard and what the state and the municipality is using in order to make decisions in regard to our risk levels. So the first slide here represents just a typical day in Alaska of the DHSS dashboard. And if you look at the slide where it says that number one hundred and three, this is not today's numbers. This is one of the screenshots I took over the weekend. But each day by noon, typically between eleven and twelve, they'll update the day's numbers with the number of resident cases, and then right below it, they'll put the number of non-resident cases, and that'll be the total for the day. And then the rest of the chart here just shows all the different numbers that relate specifically for Alaska. So I'm going to share my screen so that I can show everyone how to navigate the information specifically for Anchorage. All right, so this is the live site for today's information. As you can see, we had sixty-eight new cases today total. But if you click up here at the link where it says Alaska Coronavirus Response Hub, this is where you can find just a wealth of information about anything COVID-related in Alaska and specifically Anchorage, which is what I look at every single day. So if you scroll down about a quarter of the way through the site, it will load with a map here. It shows you all the different colors depending on what alert level the specific region is. And as you can see, that Anchorage is red. And then if you look all the way to the right, it'll tell you the total number of cases we've had here in Alaska, and then it'll tell you the total number of hospitalizations. And then to look specifically at Anchorage, you'll just change the region over here to the left to Anchorage. And then it'll show you that here Anchorage were red. We've had two thousand five hundred and nineteen cases total, and it'll tell you the number of recovered and the total number of hospitalizations. This is a good thing to look at. I look at it every day, and I typically will change the dates if I missed a certain day to see how many cases we had over any given period. And typically, what I found is that we usually have the least amount of cases on Wednesday because that will reflect people that got tested on typically Friday or Saturday. So if you keep scrolling down this site, the next thing it's going to show is the total number of tests that Alaska has given. And as you can see, we've done about three hundred thousand tests, and this is live information as of yesterday. And the average turnaround for any test in Alaska is three days. An ASPHL is Alaska State Public Health Lab. And you can click on facility. On facility is places like Providence or the bigger hospitals in Alaska. And then commercial would be when you go to like your typical healthcare provider, and they send the lab off to somewhere like Capstone or any commercial vendor. If you scroll over, you can select specifically Anchorage, especially if you're looking to get tested or you're trying to help someone find a place to get tested. And it does take a little bit to load because it has a lot of data. And as you can see, we have tested about one hundred and seventy-eight thousand here in Anchorage. And the average turnaround time for a commercial test today is two and a half days. For a bigger facility, it's three point six days, and then for the state lab, it's two point nine. So if somebody asked me today, where should I go get tested? I would just browse through the site and tell them that. I usually recommend that they go to their healthcare provider, they send it off to a commercial lab, and then the turnaround time is a little bit quicker. If you keep scrolling down the site, it has even more information. And this is specifically information on where all the testing sites are in Alaska. It has a nice map, and then you can just click on your specific region that you're looking at, and it will tell you all the different testing sites in the area that you're looking at. Sorry, my mouse is acting. Put in a zip code. And it'll give you all the different testing sites. So if you're at the ed center, it'll tell you the closest one is Muldoon Community. And as you can see on the map, there's a lot of different places in Anchorage that you can go. They're all listed here, and the great thing is if you click on one specific clinic, like Providence Health Park, it'll tell you what the cost is going to be, it'll tell you the address, and then the hours that they're open, and also their phone number so that you can call ahead and let them know you're coming or find out more information. Scrolling on down the website, this next section will talk about bed capacity in Alaska, inpatient beds, ICU ventilators, and then the number of people that are currently hospitalized with COVID. And this chart is what the Muni uses to help us figure out what alert level we're in because it really does matter how many beds we have and how many ventilators we have. So if you're looking at Anchorage, you'll see that we're in the red for inpatient bed capacity, and we have been in the red for about a month. We have one hundred and thirty-one beds available and one hundred and twenty-seven ventilators. Typically, whenever I look at this, we have more beds than we, or more ventilators than we have beds, but we're a little reversed today. But we are in the red here for Anchorage for inpatient bed capacity. And then the next section is where it shows the modeling. I know earlier in the pandemic, UAA had come out with a great model of what they thought our curve was going to look like, and now they've redone it. And as you can see, our curve is expected to go down for the state. And if you're looking at Anchorage, they think the prediction is that we're also continuing to see a downward curve, which is a good thing. The other website that I have been using is also part of DHSS, but it's the alert level. And this chart, I'm sure that you've all seen, that we use here in ASD that tells us if we're in high, intermediate, or low. If you scroll down and we look at the case rates, and it has all the numbers outlined in a chart for us. So if you click data and you look across at Anchorage, it'll tell you what the population is. It'll tell you how many cases that Anchorage has had, the case rate, the fourteen-day rolling average, and then the case rate average over fourteen days. If you keep scrolling over to the right, it'll also give you the seven-day rolling average and the seven-day case rate. And the reason why this is important is because other states are using case rates versus rolling average like Alaska is using in determining what their alert level is. So if we can go back to the slides, I think Katie has to pull them back up. Can you go to the next slide? And one more. All the way to where it talks about the schools. I think it's the next one. All right, so case rate is what other states are using, and I just think it's important to define what a case rate is. It's a lot different than rolling average because it takes the number of infections that have happened over fourteen days in any given area, and then it divides it by the number of residents times fourteen days. So as you can see, this was from the weekend, and our case rate was fourteen point five. And our Alaska statewide case rate was nine point six. If you go to the next slide, it'll tell you what other states that are comparable to ours is using to determine their risk levels for going back to in-person school. So if you look at Washington, in order for all students in all areas to go back to in-person school, they need to have a case rate of less than one point eight if their testing is adequate. And then for elementary students, they're looking at less than five point four if their testing is adequate. And as you remember from the last slide, our case rate for Anchorage was fourteen point five on Sunday, and I think it's fourteen point two today. So Alaska is using fourteen-day rolling average. Less than ten is yellow, and less than five is green for in-person school. So in comparison, we are right on track with what other states that are comparable to Alaska are doing. So when I hear like on social media, I get a lot of emails about community members asking, well, why is Washington or Oregon doing this, and Anchorage is doing something else? And it's really important for the community members to really understand that we're using two different sets of numbers, that they are comparable, but you can't compare them exactly. So case rate versus the fourteen-day rolling average. So pending any questions, that will conclude my report. And then we do have an email address for COVID-related questions because we do get lots of questions in our office, and it's covid-nineteen@asd-k-12.
Thank you. I do see that Board Member Hildy has her hand raised.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate that and the explanation of the case rate. I hadn't heard of that before, but I had heard the comparisons, especially to Washington and other states, and understanding that a little bit better. I did see on that chart, you know, some of the primary grades having a higher level, and so breaking it apart to those younger students, is that something that's being discussed, being looked at on what that might look like in Alaska and Anchorage specifically? That's a good, that's a good.
Yeah, really, we do have a working group with that in consideration for ASD. Of course, as statewide, different districts have determined different levels and, you know, the threshold in regard to their medium, high, and low risk. Some are not just by districts, but by individual communities. So they would look for no community transmission, things like that, not a large area or a borough or a municipality like us, because they do have some land in between. But we are getting schools started, and then we have a working group in working on younger students and what would this, how would this look differently for them, to bring them back into school?
Thank you. Next up, I have Board Member Donnelly with a question.
Thank you, Madam President. Jen, you stated that the threat matrix was the chart that we use here at ASD. But in the Health and Social Services, July 27th of this year's, page seven of their school recommendation, they quote, say, DHS does not recommend solely using the Alaska COVID-19 alert levels that were published for long-term care facilities in populations over one hundred thousand. So they specifically disclaim the use of that chart for schools. Why are we still using that chart?
There's the Board President to Member Donnelly. This chart, where it was published, was published through the Department of Health and Social Services as a guide for districts and other organizations throughout the state to use to make determinations on their risk level. It's not the sole determining factor on what ASD is recommending to the superintendent and to the board, but it is a guiding, a guiding chart for us to use. We also, we're looking at the severity, we're looking at the R. We also, we're looking at the severity. We're looking at the RNOT, which is the reproductive number. There's a lot of different numbers that we're looking at, the number of beds. Because as you see, Anchorage right now is in red for our inpatient bed capacity. So that's something that we're monitoring every day to make sure that we are not contributing to the increased number of COVID cases.
Well, I would hope that we wouldn't put objective reliance just on this chart since it's been specifically instructed by the department that it shouldn't be the test that's utilized exclusively by school districts. But could we throw back up your slide from the other states? When it comes to Washington State, where it says 0.8 if testing adequate, is that the overall infection rate of the population? Point 1, 1.8?
This is what their case rate. So there, as you see in the bottom, it says all numbers are daily case rates per 100,000 people averaged over the last 14 days. So this is what they decided would be their case rate for going for all students in all areas returning to in-person learning.
So about two weeks ago, the Washington Department of Health, in conjunction with their Department of Education, issued new guidance. And in that guidance, the, anything below 25 per 100,000 is now considered low risk and schools should stay open. And between 25 and 50 is considered moderate risk, which they're suggesting schools possibly should be closed. But if there's any way to do it to keep the elementary kids still in classrooms. And above 75 per 100,000 is the actual high-risk threshold in their new matrix. So I'm just wondering how old that number is because that, that, I just got that information last week. That that's their new testing criteria or their risk matrix for schools in Washington State. That's seven and a half times as, as high as our high-risk at 10 per 100,000.
This information was pulled from the Smart Start charts that were published to their website a few weeks ago. And this is what Dr. Olson and Dr. Zink have been briefing to the superintendents and all the school nurses. So this was the last information that I had received. But this is based off case rate and not the rolling average, which I believe you may be speaking.
No, the new Washington.
Point of order.
Dr. Bishop, did you?
I saw you. I will just say that we will, the, the, this presentation with these explanations were specifically given to us last Thursday. So that was the update four days ago. And we can look into that, but my understanding is that what Washington is referring to is the rolling average. What you see in front of you are case rates. That's specific back to the issue that we talked about, that those two numbers are used interchangeably, but they actually mean two different things. So we'll get that information to clarify that and look for the update from our state. But these numbers are directly from the Department of Health and Social Services Education Working Group. That includes a doctor from the Department of Health named Dr. Olson, as well as Dr. Zink.
Well, the, Madam President.
Point of order, Madam President, I called it.
Member Hildy. Dave, if you have any more questions, I wanted to see if anybody else has any other questions real quick.
Madam President.
No, can I say my point of order?
You should let Member Hildy state her point of order because she was interrupted by.
I can explain for myself, thank you though.
Go ahead, Member Hildy.
Yeah, if Board members could just please refrain from asking multiple questions and let others have their turn and wait for the Board Chair to call on you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have the raise hand feature so that I can see when other hands are up. Alright, Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Superintendent or Dr. Bishop, I was comparing apples to apples. The number on the chart before us now, I believe, is the infection rate below with 1.8%. That's the World Health Organization typically uses that measure. But the new Washington State standards are case counts, a rolling average, just like ours, our threat matrix. Only theirs is not 10, theirs is 75 for the high-risk category. So it is apples-to-apples comparison.
But we will take a look, Member Donnelly, and see why our state Department of Health and Social Services is directing us in a different direction from Washington. We'll find out and be able to put that in the Board Connect or report on it next time. We'll investigate that of the differences of why.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And I would like to keep going in your superintendent update because I'm sure it has other good information in it as well. Home Finances, here we go. Thank you. Thank you, Jen, for your update.
Thank you. Jennifer, thank you. For the financial update, I just wanted to share some of the slides that our CFO put together in reference to, once again, just to share the bigger picture outside of committee meeting. I have to go to the next slide. The budgeted revenue and state foundation formula, again, is based off of what we call the BSA. Is the base due allocation and it's based off of an adjusted ADM or an AADM. And wanted to reflect on what the FY '21 projected revenue was. Is that number down the right-hand side? 575 million, really 576 million. And I wanted to share that it was based off of that adjusted for 49. The next slide will show you during the pandemic, some of the modeling that Jim Anderson and his team have done in regard to the parts of the formula that are really affected by student movement. Again, small and large schools, so enrollment in a particular school matters and the size of that school matters. As well as the intensive need factor, how many students will receive intensive need services and qualify for that? As well as, the last one is correspondence schools. So as students left homeschools and went into correspondence schools, the adjustments that are included in the ADM after, they're not included in the correspondence. So the correspondence is really a straight number from the BSA. And so as we move through this fall, there'll be some questions in regard to, you know, resources and what's coming to the district and some difficult decisions to be made. But I wanted to demonstrate the reasons why the predicted amount is different. So it's actually even more than an enrollment issue. It's really where kids land at the end. Sharing that information, again, the next slide will demonstrate the differences in enrollment. The blue line is where we were last year in regard to three days before school starting, and here we are. So there's some uncertainty that we're planning for in providing our programs. And we still have several kids that aren't enrolled. We have our ELL and Indian Ed Department. We've identified over 1,000 students in those departments and are reaching out personally to assist in enrollment and just understanding that. So we will bring the Board an update. But the next slide demonstrates, and if Jim Anderson is in here, he made a description of unknown variables that will affect ASD and planning for next year, which is, this year is an indicator of next year. And we left last, last year was the known and we'll be able to audit those numbers. But this year's count generally influences the next year. So we're really working through some unknowns over time. And Jim, if he can just go over this slide with the, just the particulars for just the transparency of understanding of the factors which may influence ASD in our ability to operate under similar circumstances in the future.
Certainly, Dr. Bishop.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, that would have been the quickest brief I ever gave. So we, we do have some unknown variables. Dr. Bishop gave a quick overview of where we stand year over year compared to last year and the year before. And we'll keep tracking the enrollment as, as it continues to solidify. There are some unknown variables. We know, as I briefed a couple hours ago, we could have a very low deficit this year, all the way up to a $30 million deficit, depending on, on the number of students we have. But there are some bigger unknown variables that we simply don't have the answer. On the next round of stimulus bill, we know the House bill had $150 billion for education, split between higher ed and K-12. The Senate bill had closer to $105 billion split between higher ed and K-12. And the President's, as briefed on TV last week, draft intent was to have about $105 billion. All three of those are higher than the original CARES amount that was spread for K-12 across the nation. So although we don't know what the final amount will be, it, it, it's somewhat comforting to know that all three major groups of people pulling together bills are all looking at additional funding for K-12. And just like we don't know the timing, there may be requirements and constraints and strings attached to how we can use those funds. But that will probably solidify sometime between now, hopefully before the November election. But we'll, we'll see how it plays out. On the municipal and state side, we know that the, a lot of the school districts are getting together and trying to figure out, is there any way that the legislature could change the foundation formula for one year? Just this year, since we haven't had anything like this in 100 years, there was no precedent within the foundation formula to modify revenue. All of that would require statutory change and would require either a special session or something to happen during the next general session. There, there may also be additional grants and supports locally within the municipality of Anchorage as they finalize how they're getting used CARES funds. We talked a lot earlier about additional costs that the district had in terms of COVID response. We also talked about cost savings. There's a few things that we just don't know yet and we will find out. And we'll be able to finalize where we think we're going to use funding for the rest of the year. We know that PPP or PPE has been procured at a large enough quantity to open the doors back again. And we'll be able to reopen schools as soon as it's safe. We don't know the full usage rate because we don't know how much parents will send their children to school with or how much will be provided by us. And honestly, the same for some of the staff. Intensive needs numbers are significantly lower than prior years. We did not have that march through May testing that would normally have occurred, certainly for the, the incoming pre-K students, but also others within the K-12 spectrum. So those tests have started. They are going a little slower. And those numbers are starting to creep up and we'll be tracking that. Increased unemployment and medical costs during the second quarter last year, we saw an average unemployment expense for the district go from $35,000 to over half a million dollars because we're self-insured for unemployment. We expect that to be high again this first quarter, but once the doors do open up, we, we would expect a return to normalcy. Also, it's very difficult this early to find out, are our medical costs going to increase while staff, by and large, is working from home? So we're working all of those to get some metrics to be able to, to clean up our numbers and provide the Board a better estimate in which to make good decisions.
Thank you. And at the end of this, we'll certainly have additional questions and Jim Anderson will be online. The next part is really digging into the Board's understanding and some of the questions that you had last week. So I've asked Jenny Knudsen and, and her team, as well as Mark Stock, is going to share some of the information in regard to the school start. And I'll turn it over to them to give the Boards a mind's eye. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and the Board, for this opportunity to share with you a little bit about professional learning for school start. I'm Jenny Knudsen, the Senior Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm joined tonight by Lem Willis, who is a teacher, a social studies teacher at Diamond High School. Lem is part of a team who shaped the direction of professional development for school start this year. The other team members I'd like to acknowledge right now are Anya Tool, Mark Johannes, and Devin Roberts, who are also teachers in the district, Andy Klub, Senior Director of IT, and Sadiem Mendez Espino is our PD Coordinator. And we also had input from a couple other teachers, Ben Walker and Marnie Hartill. In addition to this team, I really also would like to acknowledge that we've had many other educators, including our curriculum coordinators and teachers who've really supported PD over these last three days. And I appreciate the time that they've taken to support their colleagues in this new venture of, of online learning this year. This year, our professional learning is really focused on distance learning. And we're providing a mix of synchronous or live PD sessions and asynchronous or more on-your-own PD. And today, you're going to see Canvas hubs, which have been developed to support some of that professional learning. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Willis to provide an overview of the professional learning supports using the secondary Canvas hub as an example, so you can see what is being provided to staff. So Lem, I'm going to turn it over to you to share your screen.
Well, thank you, Jenny, and thank you, Dr. Bishop and members of the Board for giving us the opportunity to share this evening. And like Jenny said, I worked with a team of educators and leadership on preparing professional development for our staff. And over the last four days, staff have been working their way through kind of a differentiated, self-paced professional development experience. They started back on Thursday of last week with in-building or school-based professional development, some of them working from their classrooms, some of them working remotely from home, but all working on getting started with Canvas and learning all that. And then, starting on Thursday afternoon and through Friday, yesterday, today, they've been working through this, this hub that we've created. And so we have an elementary hub and then we have a secondary hub. And really, the idea was to use Canvas, the main learning platform that our students are going to be on, also as a learning platform for our teachers. And as a teacher at Diamond High School, I'm a secondary teacher. So I'm going to use the secondary hub today as our example and kind of demo that for you here briefly. So our, our secondary staff all logged in last Thursday and were oriented to the hub where they clipped start here and the first module they were brought to gave a welcome from Dr. Bishop and a video message that she'd recorded for staff. And then from there, I'll take you to our modules page. Our staff worked through a whole, long process of professional development to prepare for the massive task of shifting from being everyday classroom educators to being, for first quarter, fully online educators, which is a major shift for our educators. It's a major shift for our students and our families. But it is another way to educate and another way for teaching and learning to take place. And we are making that shift. We are adopting new paradigms and getting ready for an exciting start to a school year. I keep having conversations with my colleagues and keep reminding them, hey, this is an adventure. We're going to take it right along with our students. We're going to learn right alongside our students. And we're excited about that opportunity. So just to give you an idea of the things our staff have been learning over the last few days, working their way through these modules. So we had kind of some orientation and overview of what they'd be learning. We had them work their way through modules about COVID preparedness and health screening when they enter our school buildings and those sorts of things. Talking about teaching with technology and helping our families connect to the technology resources available with the district. And then going over some final points for a successful school start, how we're going to connect with students, build that community of learners that's so important for learning to take place. The last several years, the IT department has come around to our school buildings and they've sent their, sent their staff out to do tech check to make sure all of our staff are ready for the school year with technology. This year, we did virtual self-check, or virtual tech check or self-check for our technology. And so staff worked to make sure that they were able to access all of our technology systems, including Canvas and Zoom and Remind and other services to connect with our students and our families. After that, staff worked their way through Canvas modules to make sure that they were up to speed on using our learning management system. Of course, secondary staff use Canvas during fourth quarter. But for our elementary staff, this is brand new. And they had a steep learning curve, but they've been up to the challenge and really been working hard to figure out Canvas and get ready for instruction coming on Thursday. Then we have our required trainings, the mandatory things that every year we have to review as required by DED and by the district. And then some support resources for them, social and emotional learning modules, some content-specific modules for secondary content areas. And then we are also offering some. And then we are also offering some advanced Canvas tools here for them to work on as they move forward into week one, week two, week three, you know, week 10 of the school year. We're going to continue to use this hub as our kind of one-stop shopping place for all of our professional development, both synchronous and asynchronous. So that being said, I also want to show you the professional learning schedule. So in addition to doing their asynchronous, on their own, making things work through Canvas learning, our staff also were working through these synchronous trainings, mostly held over Zoom. And so they were learning about various things they need to do their job this year. So the new iReady training to get ready for that assessment piece, content-specific sessions for their content areas. You know, you can see here, there's different math course sessions using the work that the curriculum teams developed over the summer. We needed to introduce our teachers to what they were being given there and how to navigate that. So that's all the secondary trainings. Elementary had their own set of trainings, as you can see here. Lots of different things our elementary teachers were looking at. We had a whole page of Canvas support sessions. I spent the last three workdays with probably seven hours straight of Zoom training for teachers. They've got lots of great questions, but they're figuring it out. And while it's going to be a lot to learn and they're going to continue to learn as we work our way through the school year, they're getting this all up and running, getting ready to go. We also had some asynchronous trainings available there and then trainings for our ASD virtual staff as well to get them oriented to Calvert and Apex and eDynamics and those new curricula. So we have, you know, a lot going on. Our staff are working long days and really, you know, expanding and growing and learning to prepare for teaching to start on Thursday. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Knudsen for final comments there.
Thank you, Lem. I just want to say this is just the beginning of ongoing professional learning throughout the year. So we'll continue to build on the hub, as was said. And the next steps is really working with educators and AEA to offer ongoing professional learning during in-service days through credit courses and through what we call Teacher Institute Seminar Sessions, which help people earn continuing education credits. We're going to be working with our principals to identify Canvas champions at the building. So we build that onsite support where teachers can go to and learn how to do different things within Canvas and continue to expand their knowledge. We know that working with colleagues is one of the best ways that people can learn. Just sitting in trainings all the time doesn't do it. So as you talk to your colleagues and you start learning what each other is doing, we want to identify those people in buildings that people, that other educators can go to to ask questions and to expand. We are expanding our collegial cohorts through our ASD AEA mentoring program, which is really a networking system where educators can get together who have similar roles and they can problem solve and learn from each other. And then finally, we're going to be working with Echo and really at a statewide level, focusing on problems of practice around distance learning so that not only can we learn from folks in our own district, but we can expand out to other districts like Kinnai and Matsu and Juneau and other districts that have people that are really grappling over problems of practice around online learning and we can learn from each other and build those support systems. So we do better when we learn from each other. So those are some of the next steps that will be coming. And that concludes our report around professional learning for school start. So I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you. Excellent job. Thanks, Lem, as well, and have a good first day on Thursday. We're going to transition now into understanding some of the questions have been and what exactly, when we get to the classroom in a class day, will it look like? So understanding the implementation is also important. And at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Stock. He's invited some folks to share as well.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and welcome, everyone. And thanks for this opportunity to answer some questions. Staying in vain with that whole idea that Dr. Bishop brought up of drilling down into your questions from last board meeting. You may remember a lively discussion regarding time last week, last board meeting, where we talked about students and learning time versus teaching time. And so what are our expectations? What are appropriate? So I want to take just a minute to talk a little bit about some guidance that has come out across the country. And I think you'll see when we get done talking about elementary, secondary and special ed time guidance, I think you'll see that we are very much in keeping with what most states are looking at. So I want to start out by saying that student learning time includes a lot of things besides just sitting in front of a Zoom camera and listening to a teacher talk. Student learning time also goes beyond that. It includes everything from guided practice, where the teacher is working through small group, large group, and guiding them with the information that has already been taught during a direct instruction. Also, of course, includes independent practice, which would be work they might do offline or at home. It also includes applying themselves to new learnings and transferring learning from one subject or one area to another. And it also includes extensions and accelerations and a lot of other things. Teacher time also includes both whole group instruction, where a teacher might have the whole class together and work through a lesson. But in this online environment, what we're finding to be very effective is a lot more cohorts or smaller groups where teachers put students in breakout rooms and do small group and tutoring. It also includes a lot of asynchronous teaching. And the excellent presentation that Lem and Jenny just did for what we're doing with staff also applies to students, where there's videos, there's recordings, there's software packages that do a lot of tutoring and diagnostic and advancement and acceleration as well. So all those all fall onto how we use time. On the right side here are eight states, and this was put together by a group called EdSurge. And one of our teaching and learning teams forwarded this together just to show what different states had put on their websites with regards to what's an appropriate amount of time spent in an online learning environment remotely. What is appropriate for how much time students should spend sitting in front of a camera or a Zoom lesson or doing various learning time? And so taking a look at second grade, for example, you will see across these eight states, time ranges from roughly literally 60 minutes to 90 minutes as amount of time in a day that all subjects could be considered as appropriate for that grade level. And you can see as the students go up the grade levels that the minutes increase. So just wanted to point that out. And then what we're going to do now is move to Mr. Barker, who's going to talk a little bit about how that looks at elementary. Then we'll look at secondary and then we'll look at some special ed information as well. So with that, turn it over to Dan and you can talk a little bit about elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Stock, and thank you, School Board, for the opportunity to speak with you again. I'm again the Senior Director for Elementary. At our last meeting, we had quite a few really good questions about what a typical instructional day might look like. So tonight, I brought you a sample elementary intermediate schedule, which we'll take a look at here in just a moment. Before we do that, I want to touch on a few components of the things you'll look at here. Zoom sessions, which is the main synchronous or face-to-face style tool that we use during that instruction, have sessions that are 30 minutes per session. But you'll also notice as we go through the schedule, excuse me, that it's completely appropriate, depending on the grade level and the instructional piece for that instruction in core to make up multiple sections. So to make that sound a little more specific, I guess, if we're talking about a 90 to 120-minute normal instructional block in Language Arts, we might have 30 minutes per Zoom session, but we might split that up into two or three Zoom sessions, meaning one whole group section that happens for a 30-minute chunk, then another cohort section that happens for another 30-minute chunk where half of those folks are practicing in a different setting. So in our core instructional areas, again, that would be English Language Arts and Math. We can see these synchronous sessions spread sometimes across multiple sessions in order to make sure all of the content delivery is happening. Now, of course, then on top of that, any distance delivery model, in addition to the synchronous instructional blocks, has multiple significant components that are also asynchronous. So that, if we could move to the next slide, we'll take a look at a sample elementary scheduled day. So we have template samples like this for all grade ranges and we've been working with principals for the past couple of weeks in guiding and training with them to help develop these schedules at their sites. So they all might look a little different depending on what the site's focus is or how they choose to group and block those times. But in this sample for an intermediate level, you can see color coded out by purple. For this case, we have the English Language Arts sections. So you'll see a whole group section that would be one component. And then from that, you could move into a group section where you worked with a portion of the class, while another portion of the class was off doing something asynchronously and then rotating back through with other sections. Then also by green, you would see the math. And as a sample, we've laid these out pretty directly, English Language Arts, Math, English Language Arts, Math. Understand that across any given elementary school schedule, these might be spaced out differently based on the needs of that school and the feedback they've gotten through their process with parents about when it's best to structure some of those times. Now additionally, these would all address some of those synchronous pieces. But keep in mind as well that each of the elementary synchronous instruction pieces have connected to them an asynchronous recorded section. And that's really put in place with the intent of trying to address the needs of those families who may not be able to join the instruction at that specific time. So if I have, for example, a 35 or a 40-minute math lesson, the teacher ahead of time likely will have recorded a 15 or 20-minute direct instruction piece that can be posted additionally that's going to cover those key component elements so that the family who wasn't able to attend that particular learning session at that time can still go to the Canvas shell, watch that video with their student, have enough of the direct instruction component then to proceed into the asynchronous practice sections. Then finally, we have the last color, sort of that orangish color there where we're addressing some of those non-core area instructional component pieces, which we know are super critical, but they don't receive quite the same amount of targeted synchronous time every day. They do have synchronous components to them, but that would be where you're seeing things like social emotional learning addressed. You're seeing the opportunity for the components of science or social studies, art, health, math, or art, health, music, PE, that could not be woven into other core areas, might be called out or pulled out independently to do individual work. You'll also see as we get toward the second half of that five and a half hour day that what I need or win block, which is really customizable around the different groups of students, whether that's one small group of students who might be working with a specific teacher on the reexamination of a concept in mathematics, while at the exact same time, another teacher as a generalist who's assigned to work with that group might be working with a different group of those students on a component in Language Arts vocabulary that they may be found particularly challenging or a portion of writing or phonics that they needed the most work on. That win time, just as in previous years when we're face-to-face, is really customized around the groups of students and their individual needs. So that's a look at a sample of what a school day would look like for someone in third to fifth grade. We have samples like that available that can be in Board Connect for you folks as well for the other levels being K and 1, second grade. We also have one for our sixth grade groups that are still housed in elementary. And with that, that's my piece and I will be turning it back to Dr. Stock, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So now we'll go to Kirsten, who's going to talk a little bit about a middle school and then we'll do a high school sample schedule for you and close with a little bit of how sped special education students and teaching would work into that schedule. So Kirsten.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Stock. So members of the board, this is a sample middle school teacher's schedule that you'll see in front of you. You'll see, it's not color coded as the elementary example. However, you'll see some similarities as you move through the day, just with a secondary flair. So at both the middle and high school level this year, students will be operating on a bell schedule, if you will, but just from within their own homes. And so we have set up their Zoom sessions to coincide with, you know, attending their class just as they would face-to-face on a bell schedule. And then that way, when we hopefully get back to a more medium-risk model, kids are in that routine, they know their schedule, and then they can kind of come back into the fold of that face-to-face model. So this is a sample middle school schedule. This could look different depending on the site. And so there could be some slight variations, but you'll see that teachers will start the day with their planning time or there may be staff meetings or other collaborative group work that they're doing with each other. We have some, a slight break in between those things so that they can prep for their first hour course. So their first course of the day is anywhere from a 30 to 90-minute Zoom session with students. That Zoom time will coincide with whatever assignments that are within Canvas. And so it could potentially be a class discussion day. So you could have a longer Zoom session that day or it could be a 30-minute direct instruction lesson where a teacher then follows up with some guided practice with some smaller group work during that time or independent work time for kids on Canvas for the rest of that class period. And so it really just depends on the subject, what is happening in the class that day to determine how long the Zoom session will be in that particular period each day. So and that's just really determined on what kids are learning and how the teachers plan the class for that day. So if there is additional time during the bell-scheduled 8:45 to 10:15 for their first period class, that gives teachers the opportunity to check in with kids individually, to maybe call parents if they need to and do some of those other types of duties that we really rely on teachers to do. So you'll notice as you go through the day, it's very similar for all three courses that they're teaching. So there's a passing time, if you will, built in to the secondary day, much like they would go from one class to the other in the hallway. We want to give them just some downtime in between Zoom sessions to either go to the bathroom, grab a snack, you know, do all those things that we all need to do as humans in between things. You know, for our kids, getting up and taking a stretch break is going to be really important too, after sitting a long time, you know, with a computer in and Zoom. So you'll see that we go through the day, we get to lunch. We also have our second period course, much the same format as our first period course. We have a passing time. We go to our third period course and then we end our day with some teacher planning time. And so this is just a sample. Like I said, the times may be slightly different at sites. And if you go to the next page for high school, you'll see some very similar activities. We've purposely structured middle and high school very similarly this year for ease of training, for ease of schedules and just to make things simpler for our families to navigate as well between siblings and those types of things. So you'll notice the high school schedule is much the same. It's just a little bit earlier and many of the activities will be really similar as well throughout the day for high school. The one thing I will say is that a lot of our schools, due to the safety concerns, are trying to put lunchtime towards the end of our day with a built-in snack time during that middle part of the day. And the reasoning for that just being for when we get to a more medium-risk model, we have that schedule set up. Students can grab their lunch towards the end of the day. There's less intermixing with our kids that way in a large lunchroom environment. And so it's really designed that way on purpose. And for consistency, we opted to keep it that way in our high-risk model virtually. Being at home, it'll give them a little bit more flexibility to grab, you know, snacks in between classes as well. So you'll see, I don't want to walk through this too much more, but it's very similar to the middle school schedule as well in terms of activities. But there's definitely full-time and at all buildings in the secondary level, the direct instruction each day on Zoom will be anywhere from 90 to 270 minutes. And if you go back to Dr. Stock's slide that he introduced at the beginning of our talk tonight, you'll see we're right in line with many other states at the secondary level in terms of minutes per week or per day, I'm sorry, that students are engaged in. So I feel like we're doing a good job with best practices as we kind of opened up and our teachers are getting ready to go, for sure. We've had lots of great activities this week. So with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Stock.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And so we'll close with just a quick couple of slides on special education to show how that works in conjunction with the schedules from elementary and secondary. So Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, President Michaelis, Superintendent Bishop and Board. I appreciate this is will be my last presentation to the school board. Want to let you know that for special education resource teachers, either in elementary, teaching direct instruction or in secondary, actually teaching courses, they'll pretty much be following a similar schedule like general education students. or in secondary, actually teaching courses, they'll pretty much be following a similar schedule like general education students. I mean, education teachers. But also I want to let you know that for our teachers who are working with general ed teachers, they will be doing a collaborative or co-teach model and going in during the Zoom sessions to support students with disabilities and they can do breakout rooms. They can do tutoring at a different time. One of the things that we have to do in special ed is identify those IEP services and make sure we're addressing goals and objectives. And so one of the things about trying to develop a special ed schedule is they're very unique based on caseloads and based on individual students. And so our teachers will be writing up their, their schedules to be able to meet the needs of individual students. For our teachers in also teaching tier three, three classes, a replacement curriculum, they'll be supporting and following that same kind of schedule that is set up by elementary and secondary. Next slide. And so our teachers who teach special programs, our life skills, our SLC classes, structure, learning, effective skills, they will be doing a lot of similar instruction time that we have listed for general ed teachers, but it will be using alternative curriculum. It will be using curriculum for social skills. It will be using curriculum for life skills, independent living. It will be working on job skills and those kinds of things through Zoom sessions and working with families. Related services will be a big part of this instruction, our speech pathologists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, and our adaptive PE teachers. We have all of the lessons from PE are on these Canvas shells for our teachers to be able to support our students with PE services as well. And so just want to let you know that we have plans and you can see basically a special program schedule. But our teachers will also be having to find time to make sure we meet IEP meetings and eligibility meetings and things like that, and making sure we're doing our IEP paperwork and taking data. So special education teachers will be busy. It'll, it, it's quite an intensive schedule. We learn from March through May and it, don't think the scheduling and the intensity is going to change this fall, but I know our teachers are ready. We've done some direct training with them as well and we're excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. So I guess in, in closing, I would just, I would just simply say that the challenges that this entails is that a lot of the, the management, what used to be classroom management, if you will, on the part of the teacher, one of the challenges to an online environment is that a lot of that management goes to caretakers and homemade, home folks and the people there. And that makes this especially challenging. But if you look at the amount of actual time in direct instruction, the amount of actual time that students spend then working offline or asynchronously or doing homework and projects and discussions doesn't look that different from classrooms. But the big challenge is of course that teachers are not face to face with their students all day and therefore that makes it a bit challenging. But hopefully the techniques that, that the teachers are learning and all those other professional development opportunities will, will help. And so that's our update on the implementation and how teaching and student time and teacher's time will interact in, in this new environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. And I can just finish up with this last piece of information. I appreciate the detail provided just to, just to give a deeper mind's eye in where you continue to learn and, and find new ways as Lim Wheel has suggested in, in our new frontier of learning, if you will. I wanted to end on a, on a good note prior to your questions in regard to grant updates. And we, some of this information was started before the pandemic in regard to some of our partnerships. But through it, we know that the needs have become intensified and I have Sonia Hunt here to share some updates in regard to the work with the Assemblies CARES Act and are thrilled of their support for students in the district. And Sonia.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Good evening, Board. Thank you for an opportunity to come and present this information to you. Basically, in response to our state's high rates of mental health issues to include depression, suicidal thoughts or ideations, substance abuse amongst children and adolescents in Alaska, a need to reach students at a younger age before entering high school to create healthy habits. The survey responses from principals that overwhelmingly requested mental health supports for students and the impact of COVID-19 on social indicators for our students, families and communities. So some solutions were that Dr. Bishop has successfully created partnerships in the past that were centered on behavioral health supports with Providence Behavioral Health. Both Volunteers of America Alaska, VOA is known for their work with co-occurring disorders, particularly for adolescents. And Providence Behavioral Health have a long history again of community-based mental health services to and school collaborations. The goal of this partnership is to continue the district's mission in educating all students for success in life and making sure that we are educating the whole child to include mental health and wellness supports. And so VOA has had past work with baggage, middle school, Bartlett High School, East High School and Benny Benson, and really wanted to further their work. So they took advantage of an opportunity through the Muni to really address ACEs with some of our schools. And that was, those schools are Romeg Middle Schools, Middle School, West High School, Tyson Elementary Schools, Central and Clark Middle Schools. And through an award from the municipality of $250,000, that will fund three masters level clinicians to be able to serve students and their families. And with the use of municipality CARES Act funding, VOA was also able to receive a grant award of $1.25 million to fund eight to 10 masters level clinicians for Lake Otis Elementary School, Windler Middle School, Abbott Loop Elementary School, Cassoon Elementary School, Hanshu Middle School, Chester Valley Elementary School, Muldoon Elementary School and Northwood Elementary School. There are still pending elements of this, but we are confident that this work will certify, will literally serve our students and meet their needs, especially during the wake of this pandemic. Thank you so much. That concludes my report barring any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sonia. And really thank you to Dr. Stock, Dr. Knutson and your teams, as well as Jim and starting with Tom Roth and, and his team. So we really presented a lot of information, but I want to continue to share with the board the information that's coming out. It's even greater than this and narrowing it down to give a mind's eye picture of this school year and the preparation is really the goal. Thank you. And we are all available for questions. There's quite a few of us on the participant list. If you need to, if you have a question, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And I do have a board member with her hand up. I am just going to take a very brief point of privilege real quick just to thank Cindy for all of her hard work and she will be very, very missed. And I, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your service to our kids. Yes.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yes. All right. First board member I do have up in the queue is Member Marsette.
So my question is on the course time during elementary, middle school and high school, that 30 to 90 minutes, how many students to, I guess, what would be the teacher ratio to the students as far as presenting those, that instruction?
Mark, I'm going to, Dr. Stock, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So I think if you remember from the elementary example that Dan had put up, you will notice that there was what was listed as cohort one, cohort two. So there was whole group, which would be the whole class. And then there's cohort one, which would be smaller groups. And then cohort two, which was small groups. And then of course, the purple there, the win groups would be small groups as well. So that kind of explains how it's a combination of all those things. So if that answers your question.
It would generally, you would divide your class into two smaller groups to do those cohorts. What we found last year was a teacher looking at 25 to 26 little squares in Zoom was difficult to ensure that learning and, and attention was, was on, on task. So it's designed this way so that the teachers can, can break it down. But they, but they're, they might also be, as Dr. Stock said, due to like the, the specific need. And that would, and that was also mentioned by Cindy as a breakout group. Zoom allows you to have some breakout groups as well.
I get, I, I asked that question because I, and I may have been totally wrong, but I had heard or thought I heard at one time that we were going to like combine grades or something and have bigger groups or, or something like that and then break them out. So I just wanted to make sure it is the classroom teacher. Is it the classroom teacher that's doing this or is it someone else?
Yes, it's, go ahead, Dan.
I was gonna say, yes, through the president, Member Marsette. In most cases, this would be the classroom teacher, but at an elementary setting, it could be any one of two or three certificated instructors that are assigned to that grade level group. So for example, if the board will recall, we, we pulled out some of those specialists who folks would normally travel to and they are certificated teachers as well. So one method of a cohort might be that as whole group is happening, I, as the teacher, I would give some practice activities for one group of folks and have them shut down the Zoom piece, work on that asynchronously while I do some direct instruction with a smaller portion and then I cycle them back. This is actually a pretty similar model to instruction that happens face to face. It's just in a normal classroom, you have them all there and one group's working in the back doing one thing and another. In this setting, we need a few more adults to be able to manage those in separate groups if we're managing more than one Zoom session at a time. But if we're doing it asynchronously, you would just have them log back in and out depending on the activity.
Member Marsette, you might be thinking of the ASD virtual in, in a similar circumstance where an ASD virtual teacher is connected to a school and students that are enrolled in the virtual program, which has the curriculum and all the planning and assignments done by the Calvert Learning in elementary school. So that there isn't separate preparation, but I might be the liaison for multiple grade levels to my school as, as a virtual teacher.
Yeah, thank you. I just needed that, that clarification because I, I, I just, I wasn't clear on that. So that, that does help. Thank you. And just on a side note, Cindy, thank you for your service. We've been friends. We've gone through a lot of things with my own child. So thank you tremendously for your service, ASD, and your service to me as a parent and my student. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Member Mitchell. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. With our special needs students, I'm, I'm pretty sure that I heard in the presentation that Cindy gave that they are the physical therapists, the occupational therapists, those types of people are going to be working with them virtually. Is, is there any case where they're still going to be working with them physically directly or is that not part of the high risk scenario?
This is Cindy. And no, they will be doing virtual, but they also have lessons that are asynchronous as well that they will be putting out and working directly with parents and providers to support in the home and work on those goals and objectives. And again, those goals and objectives for OTPT and speech, if we are all working together across the home environment and across school when they return, the benefit will be significant. So I know our staff are really working hard to develop plans around that and make sure to reach out to families and support them with the related services.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to also chime in and thank the Muni for including us in their CARES funding, CARES Act funding. So I have, but I do have a couple of questions just for my own understanding. How are our related services people connected to the, to, to, to the implementation of, of this, of, of this? I, I guess it's a program. I mean, how mainly counselors, how are we, how are we engaging them in, in terms, in, in the mental health piece? And then the second question just has to do with whether or not we can add additional schools. I know it takes money, but if we can add additional schools.
Sure. That's a great question and I'll, I'll start. So the original idea was, it really came from this last January and understanding about the guardrail about mental health services with a budget that isn't growing. And so to utilize partners in this and understanding that many times solving an individual concern or individual, individual problem or roadblock with, with a child can be solved through a family. And so the needs would be identified within the school, the school nurse, school counselors, and the referral would be made with families first to families about this resource. And so the occurrence of any kind of need occurs first in a school with our, through our traditional, you know, understanding of teachers referring to in elementary school, a principal, a nurse, a counselor. I think I need some help here with a student. And from there, through the nurse and counselor, depending on who's on site and schools have, if they have one or the other, would then make a referral. But again, the referral goes directly to a parent first in regard to another resource that they might be interested in.
Okay. So then the, the recommendation, so a child gets referred. I'm just trying to figure out how that will, how that's going to look so that we don't violate any FERPA. I think we had this conversation.
Yeah, we are up on that and we will share that as it gets implemented, the details of that. Yeah.
All right. And then, but there will be involvement with counselors and nurses.
Correct.
Okay.
And then again, the, the education rights goes back to the parents and that's where it started.
Okay, perfect. And then.
Growth of it. That was a good question too. It started small. We actually brought on, because it's a new project, only four schools for the readiness of principals because we wanted the principals to be directly involved from the start. And maybe, Sonia, can you jump on and just share kind of how it started and then the expansion of it and, and what we look for?
Sure. Thank you so much, Dr. Bishop, to the board, to the president, to Member Bellamy. Great questions. During this whole process, principals have been involved every step of the way. Counselors have been involved every step of the way. Elementary and secondary education have, have been involved every step of the way. Special education has been involved and later, school nurses to be able to facilitate that. We wanted to make sure that principals were heavily involved to make sure that the buy-in was fully there. Principals know their building best. And so while there will be an overall plan, principals do reserve the right with their own hyper local school teams to be able to implement or just kind of pivot slightly for what works best for their students and families.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So this is the original list or did we, oh, we added the schools on the bottom? Is that what we did this year?
Yeah. So the top schools are the four top schools are, are the original schools that VOA was working with. The middle schools are the expansion for the eight to 10 masters level clinicians with the $1.25 million. And the bottom schools are really like the work is, the focus is mental health, but it's also ACEs. And that was through a municipality, a separate grant.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I have Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Stock, as you well remember, last meeting, I questioned, I expressed that I thought there was a very important need for a dichotomy in instructional time for secondary versus elementary. And that secondary should have additional instructional period. It looks to me like this new, the plan as explained to the board today does that. I'm really, really pleased to see that. My question has to do with how it compares with all those state examples that were presented in that the minimum standard for secondary students in every one of those states is at least 180 minutes. And I'm seeing at least 90 in our plan. And if the goal is to get to 180 minutes, is that clear with our instructors and how are we going to achieve that?
Thank you, Member Donnelly. So through the president. So yes, I can answer that question very easily. The difference is that the guidance that you saw in that first chart that was, that I had presented from the eight different states, that was the total amount of learning time for the student, not the. that was the total amount of learning time for the student, not the teaching time on the behalf of the adult. So for example, in, in the model that Dr. Johnson shared with you, you saw 30 minutes to 60 minutes, three times a day, right? So let's just say it was 30. There's 90 minutes to 180 minutes of actual direct instruction. That's not the same as the student's learning time. So you add in the smaller group work listed, the dis-
Dr. Stock froze, so I'll take over. So if you add in um the direct instruction time with the other activities that a child would do uh during that time, that's considered that the learning time. And the elementary uh schedules actually uh were built back when we talked a couple of weeks ago. It's just um, we didn't explain it well and, and understanding that it's two different cohorts. So the teacher continues to teach, but the groups for students, uh, the minimum level is what we shared that you have to at least do this every day. You have to do this every day. Um, but, but teachers actually have it broken down into smaller groups and individual sessions. Very similar to what a classroom looks like. Uh, we want to liken it to, you know, I'm going to teach a reading lesson or a math lesson and my kid, you know, 25 to 30 kids are in my class. I'm going to do a big lesson to everyone for 20, 30 minutes. But then I'm going to monitor, which is that part that's home now, and I'm going to pull a small group of kids off to the side and teach them what I believe and what I see just from my monitoring, what they might need more supports for. So the teacher is continuing to teach. It's just that through that they have to get off with a smaller group and really address skills. And so the difference is that we, we, we gave a visual that, that hopefully helped understand that a little more about the time because I think that's um, where, where we were, were stuck. So um, in our explanations uh to the board. But the key is what um member Marsette picked up on as well about those the different groups throughout the day actually are fluid. I think you're back, Mark. Take over.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. My internet is unstable, but not me, so.
Thank you very much. Um, did Dr. Stock, did you have any more you wanted to add to that or?
It sounds like she nailed it perfectly, so.
Wonderful. Next up in the queue, I have uh member Marsette.
So I think you really answered my question. Um, and I kind of knew this, but I just want to ask it. So when we have those breakout of those sessions, that's where we're going to address our MPSS, um, our different levels of support that students need and be able to uh identify those groups that might need extra help.
Uh, uh, through the president, to member Marsette, absolutely. That wind time, similar to in, in, in a non-COVID classroom. That is when that happens. Um, in this format though, that could also happen during those cohort times, really anything but that whole group instruction. And again, that's going to be facilitated by having the potential in a lot of those classroom settings to have more than one certificated instructor available. So while the direct instruction lesson, maybe that's the uh asynchronous piece that was even recorded, could be being viewed at one point by a group while they're working on some, with someone who needs to refresh or uh have additional practice with those skills. You could have the rest of the class moving through other instruction with the other uh certificated person in the room.
And then I think, can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, one second, one second. Um, also on the opposite end of that, our, our students that need to maybe be challenged a little more, we'd also be providing them that additional time too, so.
Yes, yes ma'am. Wind, wind should go in both directions, absolutely.
Right, okay. Sorry, Dr. Bishop.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay. And I just wanted to share too, this is working with our families in regard to um the pool on data through their internet, uh keeping an open Zoom, um, and then high school kids moving on and off. Um, we really tried to work in shorter chunks where they can go off, back on smaller groups uh to work with that, that pool on data that um, one child and a parent working, but also might multiple children working uh depending to not be on if you weren't given that direct. But again, that elicits that main issue that Dr. Stock talked about is that management of students. Um, that, which is what we, teachers do as well, um, when they're teaching.
Right. So I, I don't see any other hand raised. Can I ask one more question?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other question is, I worry a little bit about um, our support for students with Chromebooks. And once everyone gets online, I'm sure there's going to be um more, uh, what do I want to call it? More um work orders or whatever you want to call it. Um, are we confident that we have the support um to be able to handle that influx of those type of calls?
You know, that's a great question. I'm going to turn it over to uh Mike Fleckenstein, the chief of um information technology. And uh, we do have a, a little bit of struggles in regard to supply chain, but he will share some other supports.
Thank you very much. Uh, through the board, to member Marsette. Uh, my name is Mike Fleckenstein. I'm the chief information officer for the district. Um, uh, so one of the beauties of Chromebooks is that the support needed for Chromebooks is, is minimal compared to things like a full-blown PC or an Apple product where uh the device is designed to do many different things in, in different ways and requires very specific updates and that sort of thing. So our Chromebooks are managed centrally, which allows us to do things like push out to those devices, uh very specific places, settings, um, things where students have everything that they need right on the main screen as opposed to having to get in and, and get after it. And so a lot of that troubleshooting or issues that may come up uh really happens at the centralized level. And so yes, we do have capacity to handle those, those issues. Part of the one-to-one um uh initiative that we pitched uh a little bit earlier in the year and you approved the funding for also included some additional support uh around the district in schools to be able to help with that, uh, with, help with that work. And so students will be able to work with their teacher and the local um tech support to get some of those uh questions answered. And then we also have a centralized staff ready to help triage and, and solve those issues. Um, I am sure we're going to, to, to run into uh some issues right as we get out of the gate with a whole bunch at once. Uh, but the team is standing by to be able to solve any of those that come up. And for the most part, if we end up with an issue, it tends to be a um, a systemic issue when it comes to Chromebooks. And so when we solve it for a person or a small group of, of people, we tend to solve it across the board. And so uh with, with that, I would say that uh we're in pretty good hands uh moving in that direction. And um, I, I really think that the connectivity uh piece may be uh a little bit bigger of a, a challenge for us. Um, just in that uh kids have many different types of connectivity that they're using. And so, so it's not a standardized thing like our, our Chromebooks, but we're ready to support that as well.
Well, I, I never doubted that you'd looked at that, but I just hadn't asked the question, so I thought I would. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands in the queue. And so at this time, we will go ahead and move on in our agenda. Next up is the consent agenda and Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just get to my, my little tiki. I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of memorandum zero one zero, the personnel report, June 16th, 2020 executive session and regular session minutes, and June 25th, 2020, special meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Katie, if you would please do a roll call vote for us.
You bet. Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
There we go. And the consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. Moving on, we are coming up to our action items and I'm going to read a brief statement uh for public testimony on action items. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president and if seconded by another board member, I will open up the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance, I will call on you when it is your turn. You have three minutes to testify. When there are 30 seconds remaining, a bell will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen. And our first uh memorandum, uh, Madam Vice President, if you could please introduce memorandum 003.
Yes. Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum 003 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for $1,449,995. Funding will continue 21st Century Community Learning Centers uh after-school programs at 10 schools, launching two new CLC sites through the 2021 school year.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Member Bellamy?
Just a clarification, uh, uh, just wondering how we're going to implement the program. Is, I, I guess it's virtual or we, are, are we not going to do it first quarter and then continue to the rest of the year?
Member Bellamy, that's a, a great question. Uh, through the president, I would like to request uh Glenn Nielsen to come aboard. I think he's in um. Is Glenn with us?
He is on his way um into the panelists, yes.
There he goes.
Well, uh, thank you. Yes, as a matter of fact, uh, we will be able to provide a program. This is, and I apologize, this is uh through the chair to uh member Bellamy. We will be going at this particular point in time from the very get-go when classes start and it will be um, virtual and online. This summer, as a matter of fact, we successfully completed a completely, totally virtual summer camp for our 21st Century program. Um, and in conjunction with our uh 21st Century Coordinator, Marcy Richards, I've okayed and allocated extra funds to purchase what's called Ozobots, which are programmable robots. Uh, one of the strengths of the 21st Century program is our STEM emphasis. So our summer program continued along those lines with our coding, um, with um not using the Ozobots, but using LEGO robotics. So now we'll have LEGO robotics, we'll have the Ozobots. Uh, so we'll be able to provide, and we also, uh, we've had uh some PE teachers working for us over the summer. They have created virtual PE classes as well too. So we'll have a Monday through Friday structure for our after-school program. We'll continue to serve uh the five to 700 students we serve every year and we'll be able to do so virtually.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any other board members with questions on memorandum 003? Not seeing any. Katie, would you please do a roll call vote for us?
Yes, member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette? I'll come back. Uh, member Mitchell?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Oh, yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
And member Marsette?
Yes.
Thank you.
And ASD memorandum 003 passes with seven yays and zero nays. And next up?
Okay. I, I, I move to approve ASD memorandum 001 and authorize the superintendent to accept formula grant funds from the U.S. Department of Education Office of Indian Ed, Education in the amount of $2,738,488. The time period associated with this supplemental grant is July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum 001? Not seeing any. Katie, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, member Donley?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
And member Hildy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on. ASD memorandum 001 passes with seven yays and zero nays.
Thank you. Uh, I move to approve ASD memorandum 008 and authorize the superintendent to accept a renewal grant from the Nobel Foundation in the amount of $200,000 for a one-year period for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum 008? Not seeing any. Katie, would you please do a roll call vote?
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
And member Hildy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And ASD memorandum 008 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up?
I move to approve ASD memorandum 020 and authorize the superintendent to accept the title 6B in Individuals with Disabilities Education Act entitlement grant and preschool disabled incentive grant for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The total amount for the two grants is 13 million 55, 13 million, 55,444.
Second.
Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum 020? Not seeing any. Katie, will you please do a roll call vote?
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Mitchell? President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell? Oh, come back to her last. Uh, member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes, member Mitchell's trying to give a thumbs up. Oh, there she goes.
Think I, am I unmuted now?
Okay. Thank you. I, I wasn't able to see your video. Thank you. And that was a yes from member Mitchell. Thank you.
ASD memorandum 020 passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 012 and authorize the superintendent to, to award a contract for Greening Middle School Earthquake Recovery to Cornerstone uh general contractors for a total award amount of 32,456,650 and to also authorize the superintendent to allocate $1,285,000 from the 2017 bond project balances to support full funding of the Greening Middle School Earthquake Recovery Project.
Second.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions on ASD memorandum 012? Not seeing any. Katie, would you please do a roll call vote?
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
And member Donley?
Yes.
ASD memorandum 012 passes- ASD memorandum zero one two passes with seven yays and zero nays. Next up?
I move to approve ASD memorandum zero one one and adopt the tentative agreement between the district and the general Teamsters Local nine-five-nine covering warehouse and maintenance employees, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period between July first, twenty twenty, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. I have listed a speaker to be heard for public testimony, Dale Miller. Dale, are you with us tonight? Katie, do you know if Dale was able to call in or?
I am checking with our IT folks to be sure.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
They failed to give me the information on how to unmute my phone.
Absolutely. Sir, you've got three minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. President Michaelis, Superintendent Bishop, members of the board. My name is Dale Miller. I'm the business representative for Teamsters Local nine-five-nine. I was also the spokesperson for our bargaining team during this negotiations. I want to start out by saying that this was a refreshingly collaborative negotiation session, even though that there were some trying times because of the logistics of doing everything through Zoom and that kind of stuff. I do want to thank the bargaining team that the school district put together. Once again, I think that there was a level of collaboration and trust that has been missing for a while. And so I'm glad that we were able to come to an agreement in a relatively short period of time. I think that the agreement that we did come to is a fair agreement for the district and for the members. And I did want to say to Ms. Bellamy that we do have members that do troubleshoot those computers and stuff, so if there are troubles, Teamsters will be there to help take care of those. So once again, lastly, I would like to say that, you know, I was a little bit disappointed that we couldn't together on a way to maybe save the district and the members money through health insurance, but that the Teamsters are always willing to open up the contract anytime and have that discussion should the district sort of desire to take a look at maybe some ways to save some money there. Other than that, I want to definitely recommend a unanimous adoption of this. I think it is a well put together contract, and it serves both the members, the district, and the public. Well, since I said that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Do board members have any questions on ASD memorandum zero one one? Not seeing any. Katie, would you please do a roll call vote?
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
And Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you.
ASD memorandum zero one one passes unanimously with seven yays and zero nays. And next up?
Yes, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero two five and adopt a resolution supporting the school start twenty twenty plan.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to just, as we open up for board comments and questions, we know that we do have a few amendments out there that have been sent to us by via email. I would like to, and I don't know if I am supposed to do this in a more technical way, but I would like to make a first amendment to this resolution. I move to amend the memorandum and resolution to replace the term school start twenty twenty with Alaska Smart Start twenty twenty.
Second.
Thank you. And just to speak to my amendment, it's a very clarifying component as what we are approving is attached to the memorandum, which is the ASD submission to the State of Alaska, which is the Alaska Smart Start twenty twenty framework. It is not anything to do with the school start twenty twenty plan that the task force has been working on over the summer. They are two very different components, and so wanting to be very specific that what document and, you know, to what we're referring to in this resolution. Are there any other comments or questions on this first amendment? I saw Member Hildy's hand and then Member Donley.
Could you just clarify what the, I guess, what the change is, just a little? I just don't have the other thing in front of me to see.
So the way that the memo is currently worded and stated in the resolution, it talks about the school start twenty twenty, which that is more closely tied to our school start task force and the three committees that worked all over the summer on the instructional components and, you know, the community relations components and stuff like that, where what we are actually doing a resolution in support of is the district's plan, which is a a green, yellow, red, what we'll kind of do each of those components. We submitted to the State of Alaska. It is a public document and attached to the memorandum. And it's the Alaska Smart Start twenty twenty framework, which these are two totally different documents, conversations, basically. And so I don't want it to be labeled the wrong way for what we are actually doing a resolution in support of.
May I?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, just a friendly correction. It's not two totally different ones. Basically, the Alaska framework was a template for which we had to answer questions, and our Anchorage Smart Start answered those questions, but also at the general level. But if you dig down deeper into the operational level of what they look like, that is our anchor school districts more detail. But the Smart Start, the Alaska framework, did actually, it did have some information in regard to the continuation of learning and the continuity and the consistency. So we had to, what we did was the work of the working groups, the questions that had to be answered for that were drawn from them. So they're not mutually exclusive or mutually inclusive, but one is the state's framework of the questions that we needed to give to them, which was exactly what you said, what the state Smart Start references. Ours is a bit more detailed, which is on the website.
Member Bellamy, you had your hand up, and then after that, Member Marsette.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify as well. What I, my understanding is that we are voting on, and I'm glad you made the change to the wording, because it's not our school start plan. It is what we are submitting to the state, the framework that we're submitting to the state. So and while our plan is, our start plan is based on the information within the framework that we are sending to the state, we are approving the information within the framework, not the actual plan that's going to start. Is it tomorrow? The day after tomorrow? Thank you.
Member Marsette?
So I, I don't know that I agree with this. And I think the reason I don't is because when you start talking about Alaska, that sounds like more than just, you know, I get it, it's more than what we're doing, but I think it's also you're splitting hairs because what we're doing is following the guidelines of the state, but what we're implementing is our plan based on those guidelines. So to me, it is our, whether the guidelines came from the state or whatever, it is ASD's school start plan. And and I thought, you know, I thought we had already kind of supported the framework through another meeting. Is this, and now we have a resolution. Is this something we have to vote on? Because I didn't think we had to vote on this at all.
Member Hildy?
Well, we don't have to do a resolution. The words don't stress me out. I guess if it bothers somebody else, you know, I don't necessarily care one way or another. I think we are saying we support Dr. Bishop's plan. And this memo talks about, she's going to revise it based on ongoing information, so if somebody feels more comfortable with the wording change, it's still what it is, so that the plan is already submitted.
I guess one of the ways I look at the two different documents personally is the Alaska Smart Start framework is kind of like the twenty thousand foot view. Our school start twenty twenty is much like the twenty-foot view. But you're not going to find a lot of our school start elements in the Alaska Smart Start. It's not in there. That's the twenty thousand, much less detailed. And so just wanting to make sure we have that distinction, I guess for me. I'm not seeing any other hands up in the queue, so we'll go ahead and just do a quick roll call vote on this first amendment so we can keep the conversation going.
Can you reread the amendment? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. I move to amend the memorandum and resolution to replace the term school start twenty twenty with Alaska Smart Start twenty twenty. Okay.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yep.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
No.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And President Michaelis?
Yes.
The amendment number one to memorandum zero two five passes with six yays and one nay. So now we have an amended memorandum on the table, and I see Member Donley's hand up. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. I would, well, the third whereas states that the fourteen-day average confirmed cases continues to rise. And that is no longer accurate. The, in fact, it is falling. It was up above thirty, and now it's at fourteen, as was just reported to us tonight. So that is erroneous. Additionally, the high-risk category that the resolution refers to is no longer part of the DHSS recommendation for schools. And I have inserted a quote from the most recent Alaska Smart Start twenty twenty DHS July twenty-seventh Plan from page seven. Moreover, DHSS does not recommend solely using Alaska COVID- nineteen alert levels that were published for long-term care facilities in populations over one hundred thousand, but using them as a tool, along with many other tools, to direct decision about person education. Alert levels are for long-term care facilities and do not correspond directly to school and district operational zones. So they are specifically disclaiming that old matrix as a, as a sole test for school districts and recommending against not using it that way. So I would like to say in the resolution, I think it should acknowledge that, that while the fourteen-day average was in the high-risk category under the previously COVID- nineteen threat matrix adopted by the Department of Health and Social Services, that is no longer being recommended for schools.
Is there a motion in there or?
I would move, move the adoption of amendment one by Member Donley.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second. Let's start.
Dave, did you want to speak anymore to that specific amendment?
Well, on the generals, well, no, I think it makes it accurate and factual where currently it isn't. But I am really interested in this, what is the proper measure, but that's not appropriate at this time.
Okay, Katie. Hopefully, you're still typing that in there. And then, Member Bellamy, I saw your hand up.
One of the things that is so unpredictable right now is information is always changing, and there's just no way to capture it the way I guess it's going to be concrete. But, you know, again, we're just confirming to the state that we have met and addressed every detail in the framework. And so I mean, I, so I guess I probably would not, I won't be voting for the amendment.
Madam Chair, I just have a point of order. I I've posted the language that Member Donley had sent, and I apologize that it runs altogether. That's just the way the system does that, but so I did add the language to remove what he had in parentheses, so I just want to make sure that this is okay for Member Donley.
Yeah, Member Donley, if you could please read that and make sure that reads as you proposed.
It.
I see it's going to say what it would read as, then show the change.
It does, right here. So I, in the beginning, I've kind of outlined the changes, and then if you look after the three little asterisks, this is what it will read, starting here from the whereas. So including the changes that you've given me, this is what it would read from this point right here, or my cursor is after.
Yeah, I think that is the same as what I was proposing. It just doesn't show the portions deleted versus added. And it does, in complete recognition of the point made by Member Bellamy, say that continue to recognize that circumstances are always changing. There's ongoing uncertainty, and it directly affects the decision-making that we're going to be having to make.
Thank you. Member Marsette, you have your hand up?
Yes, and I don't know yet that I support what Mr. Donley is recommending, but I do have some questions regarding that. And so I would ask Dr. Bishop, because I know that at one time it was very important for us to set like a matrix or something that we could go by because it's very important for the public to see. They need like a visual or something that they can determine or a guideline or whatever. Is there anything that says we wouldn't change? I mean, are we looking at as it could change based on this information, Dr. Bishop? Or I guess I want to hear your thoughts.
We do utilize this as a tool in our guide. In addition, you know, Jennifer Petronas shared Anchorage's alert levels, so the case count again is at fourteen or a little over fourteen, but the new case numbers is different. Remember, there was just fifty cases today. So those are two different numbers that we're interchanging here again. But we use it as a tool, and you can liken that to the plan that we created. Dr. Johnson was in close contact with AUSA, and we created the AUSA Plan, which utilizes, again, the DHSS information as a guide. We are looking to the medical professionals to provide the tools and the guidance and the knowledge that school people can use to make decision-making. And an example of this is And an example of this is when we do reach a 14-day count that starts to decrease and, and decreases as we see the trend going, just because it goes under that 29 or that, you know, under 29 for a day, doesn't mean a decision would be made, oh, let's put folks back into schools. That again, it's a tool to say we're moving in the right direction. What is the safety level? That was the same reason that we used their intermediate as, as two of our medium. We thought that that range was too big for their intermediate. So we used their guidance as our tool to create maybe a higher medium risk that's closer to that cut point and a lower medium risk. Again, it is a tool. We have to not only use this as, and their information, but then we have to think about Anchorage and what the mayor has done. So we have emergency ordinances on top of just this. So even given DHSS information, we have to pay attention to much more than that. So it is a guide, it is a tool. It was the basis of, if you recall, after, we had been using all this medical information. And after our first press conference, the question, well, people just wanted to see something. So we utilized the medical data to assist us in making decisions.
And that pretty much confirms what I thought, that again, this is just another tool and we make a decision based on all the factors. So thank you.
Yeah, Member Holloman, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment, which is to strike the words "that is no longer recommended for schools," and I'll speak to it in thirds of a second.
I'll second.
If I can speak to that, I, I do understand eliminating the wording about the recent rise. To some degree, this resolution should be timeless and not necessarily speak as if it's reacting to a particular circumstance. I think that brings some clarity to it. The wording about something not being applicable to schools, as the superintendent just pointed out, this is one of several tools. None of them may apply exclusively to schools, but they all apply to our situation in general. So I think it just makes for a cleaner and less confusing statement.
Point of order, Madam President, I'm sorry. The system did kick me out right in the middle of all that. So I just got back in and I was wondering if Mr. Holloman, or Member Holloman, could repeat his amendment to the amendment and who seconded that.
Yes, it was a motion to strike the words "that is no longer recommended for schools." And Member Mitchell was the second on that.
Thank you.
So could that amendment to the amendment, can it be read in whole?
I think it'll, it should pop up on the screen.
I can't read it. When it comes up. For me.
Okay, focus.
So now I have an amendment, and now I have an amendment to an amendment. So that's as far as I can go. So we voted this one, then we vote on the main amendment. All right, I'm tracking. While Katie is getting that back, okay. Dave's hand was up and then it was back down again. So we're just going to wait for it to, all right. Go ahead, Member Donley, you can speak to the amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, I was just going to try to read what Andy's proposing so that, because Star doesn't have it in front of her. It's hard to understand. It would change the language, so it would say, "Whereas the number of confirmed COVID cases in the municipality of Anchorage and the 14-day average of confirmed cases was recently within the high-risk category under a previous COVID-19 threat matrix adopted by the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services." Period.
So, okay, I see what you did, Katie. You put that amendment to, and strike that out there. So then in your, Ms. Katie, where you have the full written, the third whereas will read as follows. We just need to take out that, that is no longer recommended for schools in that verbiage.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, Member Mitchell.
It, should it say, "under a previously adopted COVID threat matrix versus, or a COVID threat matrix previously adopted, but a previously COVID-19 threat matrix adopted?" It seems like those two-
That word was in there at one point. I think it just needs to get added back in there.
Well, they're in there, they're just separate, they need to be together, I think. Thanks.
Ms. Katie, did you catch that?
Yes, and I am working to get that revised and posted back up. Hold on.
We appreciate you, Katie.
So can I ask Mr. Donley, does he still have two more amendments?
I don't know.
Okay.
First of all, as to this amendment, I think I'm going to vote for it. But as to other amendments, my amendment number two, which I'd be looking at version two, I don't need to move anymore after the discussion we had. Clarify that we're not specifically approving the, the deep-down details of the, of our Anchorage School Start Plan, but rather this is the more generic compliance with the state. And then for my final amendment, which is really simple, it just says, adds to the final resolved that the superintendent's judgment would be in the consultation with the school board. So I'm still planning on offering amendment number three.
All right, so we do have the revised amendment to the amendment that reads the newly corrected way. Star, did you need it read one more time? Are you good?
Can I read it one more time?
So the third whereas will read as follows. Whereas the number of confirmed COVID cases in the municipality of Anchorage and the 14-day average of confirmed cases was recently within the high-risk category under a previously adopted COVID-19 threat matrix adopted by the Alaska Department of Health and Social Services, this circumstance combined with ongoing uncertainty directly affects decision-making on the education delivery model and necessitates continuous evaluation and assessment of the environment. Not seeing any other questions.
So what, what in here is different from the original? Is, Katie, you can't underline or strike?
No, it's the first line that the strike through that is no longer recommended for schools.
Okay, that's all was taken.
That was taken out.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Katie, can I get a roll call vote on the amendment to amendment number two?
Yes, President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
No.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes, I would just like to change the adopted, move that behind matrix and get rid of the second adopted. But otherwise, yes.
Amendment to amendment number two passes with six yays and one nay. So now we are back to a twice amended ASD memorandum 025.
Madam President, I guess technically, I think we adopted the amendment to the amendment. So the main amendment is back before us.
Oh, you're right, okay. So are there any questions on the amendment number two as it now reads?
Yes, can you read it to us as it now reads? Is it what we just approved?
It's what we just approved.
Yeah, it's the same as what we just approved.
Okay, got it, thank you. So I guess I would just ask, can we move it so that we don't have adopted in there twice? I'm just not seeing. Whereas the number of confirmed COVID cases in the M of A and the 14-day average of confirmed cases was recently within the high-risk category under a COVID-19 threat matrix previously adopted by the Alaska-
How, could I make a suggestion?
Yes, Member Donley.
I would just, under a previous COVID-19 threat matrix adopted by, pre, under a previous, well, don't put adopted in there, just take out the LY and just say, "under a previous COVID-19 threat matrix adopted by the Alaska Department of Health and Social Services." Does that sound better?
Sure. I don't believe we need to vote on that because that's the same thing. It's just a grammatical change. Is there a disagreement with that? Okay, good. So.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I'll get that grammatical change back up in just a moment.
Dr. Bishop.
Yes, just in fully understanding the board's intent of the word consultation, does that mean bringing it back to the board, calling the board, calling the board president?
Oh, we're not there yet. We're not voting on that one yet.
Okay.
Same question, Dr. Bishop.
All right, so the motion on the table is amendment number two as amended. Are there any questions on this one? Roll call vote on, even though it's a technicality, but yes, roll call vote, please, Katie.
Sure, and I will get, I'm not sure why the Y did not come off this time, but I will make sure that in the official record, it is corrected. I'm sorry about that. Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
No.
Amendment number two as amended passes with six yays and one nay. Mr. Donley, is there a third amendment?
Yes, Madam President, I, the last resolve on the resolution, the last sentence reads, "Consistent with the superintendent's authority, the board expects the administration to implement the School Start 2020 Plan." I guess that would now be Alaska 2020 Plan. And to revise the plan is necessary in the superintendent's judgment. So with that amendment that happened earlier, I don't intend to offer this because my intent with this was the Anchorage School Start 2020 Plan. So I'm not going to be offering this.
Okay. So on the table, barring any other questions or comments or amendments, we have an amended version of ASD memorandum 025. I'm not seeing any other waving hands or blue hands. So Katie, if you would kindly call a final roll call vote.
Yes, let me get the Alaska Smart Start up there. Make sure it comes up correctly. Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
I've, I've kind of gotten lost. We're voting on the resolution, right?
The main resolution, yes.
No.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
President Michaelis?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
ASD memorandum 025 as amended passes with six yays and one nay. Next up on our agenda, we have non-action items. Do board members have any items that they wish to pull for discussion? Member Hildy?
Could I pull item nine, the code of conduct's BB, oh, I gotta read, you got it. BB 9271.
Yes. And Member Marsette, I see your hand up as well.
I believe it's the last one. I can't read this stuff, but I believe it's the last one on the resolution for funding.
Yep, number eight, the funding resolution discussion.
Right.
Do any other board members wish to pull any other non-action items? All right, not seeing any. We will go ahead and start with number eight, the funding resolution discussion. And Member Marsette?
Yes, normally, I will tell you, I don't necessarily support resolutions, but this has been brought to us by the district with a recommendation because of our funding situation with the loss of students enrolled in the district. And we are going to need help in our budget, if not so much this year, definitely for FY '22. And so what I'd like to do is have a discussion, or I don't know if we want to have it now, but we need to start thinking about what is, are, are we looking to have two count dates, two Oasis? Are we looking at asking for a higher hold harm, or a lower home of harmus? Right now it's 5%, lowering that to 2%. Are we looking at asking the legislation for all of the above? It's a discussion we need to have as a board as to what are our, ask, I guess, of the legislation in helping us meet this challenge with our budget due to COVID-19.
Are there any board members that have any comments or thoughts they would like to contribute to the conversation? Member Mitchell and then Member Hildy.
I, I agree with Member Marsette, but I guess I'm not really prepared to have that discussion right now. I appreciate what was presented to us during the Finance Committee meeting and the various alternatives. And it's something that was brought up also in the Communications Committee meeting last week. So it's definitely something that I think every board member is aware that we need to do. And I don't know if we, you know, in terms of the timing, if we have to have a special meeting or if, you know, what, what the form is, if we have a special work session, but I do agree.
Thank you. Member Hildy?
Thank you, yeah, I appreciated the intro at the Finance Committee today as well. And I, I guess I don't know what I think just yet. But is there a timeline that you're looking for and some feedback that you want? And when would you like that?
And I think I would, I'm sorry.
No, just-
And I guess I would ask, I don't know if there's a rush because they're not going to be back in session right away. So this might be something we could put back on non-action. Or, you know, I think this is going to require a lot of discussion on the board part. I know a board doesn't like special meetings, but I think this might be one that would be worth having because I'm sure we all have different ideas of how we could do this and we might even come with our own suggestions. And there is a lot of information to digest here. I guess I would defer a little bit to Dr. Bishop or Jim to ask them if there is a timeline on this. But I do believe we have time to address this.
I can certainly speak to that. The, the first recommendation and the one that school, the Alaska State business officials have been discussing as well, that around the state would really support most people and most districts, is basing that on, again, last year's funds. There isn't really a timeframe, other than we want to make a comment about it. Again, you had mentioned the legislature earlier today in the meeting wasn't in session. Most likely until after elections, there is not going to be a session. Jim Anderson mentioned at the prior meeting that perhaps he would foresee them coming together on an emergency basis if the federal, the next stimulus came through. But we don't have a definite, it's basically the board making a statement about this. And Jim, could you provide additional information or concurrence if, if I wasn't reading what has come out?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, would be happy to. Um, as we discussed briefly during the Finance Committee meeting, there's a couple times, um, where I think we'd want to know, what is the board's legislative priority? One would be if this, the legislature's going to call a special session and come back to address, um, either the Stimulus Bill 2, or in November, when the governor's, uh, ability to waive statutes ends with, uh, what was approved at the end of the last session, um, then that would be the best time, as right as that special session is starting to form. The next possibility is after the November election, after, uh, the parties have had time to rebuild their committees, who's going to be on the committees, and then start pressing, um, the legislators for the next regular session.
Thank you. Uh, Member Bellamy, you had your hand up?
Just a question, um, and I know we're not like any other district, but, uh, what, what conversations have we, have you had, Jim, with other districts? Are they, um, it, I guess, is, is, is this part of a, are we trying to be supportive of each other in this, or does all district have a different kind of, uh, priority when it comes to the funding?
Through the President to Member Bellamy, um, by and large, within Alasko, as we've had a couple large meetings, um, the business officers agree for the larger districts, uh, that finding a formula, um, that gives you some ability to have, uh, confidence in your projection for the next year's revenue, um, is important, because every year in February, we're the first district in the state who locks in our, our budget for the following year. Uh, many of them are April and May, depends on their charters. Um, but, but even then, that's before the end of the legislative session. So by and large, most would agree that having predictability on your follow-on year's, um, budget is something that they want. There are some exceptions. If you're Koyukak or Delena, or one of those where the school district by and large has picked up a large amount of growth, especially this fall, as parents have made choices to move their children to homeschool correspondence programs, then they need the money this year because they now have to pay allotments out to all those parents. So you're not going to get 100% agreement within ASA or Alasko. Um, you're going to have that handful of small school districts that are almost entirely correspondents, um, who, at least this year, are going to want increased revenue. Um, but you can talk to Fairbanks, um, they're also significantly under in their enrollment on what they had budgeted for. Uh, Matsu's one of the few in the Big Five, the only one in the Big Five, that's not in this situation right now, a, at least as much. Um, but that's, that's kind of where it stands. There's a handful who, this particular year, need and want the additional money in order to pay the allotments to the parents who sign their students up. Um, and a lot of districts who really, um, are very uncomfortable at this point, right before schools start, when they're seeing lower, lower projected enrollments.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Member Marsette, would you be comfortable if we kept this on non-action for the next meeting and allow board members some time to process, especially everything from the Finance Committee meeting and everything that we've heard from, uh, Jim and his team? And, you know, we can maybe circle back around on this, you know, in a couple of weeks and, you know, get some more, um, concrete thoughts from the rest of the board?
What, what I would ask is, are board members, uh, comfortable with that, or, and I know board members don't like to do this, but I almost would like to have a special session to address this because it is of such importance, and, uh, there are a lot of factors involved with this, which is going to require a lot of discussion. And I think having it during our, I mean, we can certainly do it at that time, but I don't want to be limited on the time that we spend on discussing this.
Okay. I do know that we have a work session coming up at our next meeting, which was going to be dedicated to the strategic plan, but, um, if board members, you know, were able to, we could, um, you know, tack on some extra time, start a little earlier, and, you know, maybe talk about both, if it worked for board members and the administration, um, and try and group it all together, um, if that were, were possible. But we can, um, talk about schedules and, and opportunities and options and, you know, be able to have the conversation.
When is our next meeting?
September 8th.
8th, okay. Um, is that, do you think there'd be space for both during that work session? Probably not.
Not in a one-hour time session. It would be something we would have to consider expanding to be maybe a two-hour work session.
That would be kind with me personally.
Yeah, we just need to, and we can send a poll out to board members, um, after we talk with the administration and just kind of see, you know, how things, um, have the potential to flow. And so, just throwing out ideas, um, you know, as I'm listening to folks. And so, are there any other, um, comments or questions on the spending resolution by board members? All right, not seeing any. Let's move on to the next item that was pulled, uh, by Member Hildy. This is BB 9271, Code of Conduct discussion.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't know if everybody has that in front of them, but it is, uh, part of what lists how do we function as a board, and there seems to be some ongoing confusion, um, on what the role of a board member is, and what does the process look like when a board member wants the board to consider an idea? Um, so it's a bit discouraging because we spent a lot of time working on governance. We've had volunteer trainers, we've had paid trainers, but, um, just to clarify and work through the Code of Conduct and what we've agreed to, is if somebody has an idea, and the way to present it is through the RFI process or by making a motion, um, it, it's not that you get to just say it over and over again, and the superintendent does something. No individual board member should have an expectation that the superintendent is going to do something because you have an idea. Um, the superintendent's only responsible for direction from the board regardless of how often a board member makes requests. So it wouldn't be appropriate to share that, that, that cause and effect didn't happen because that should never be the effect. Me just saying, "I want my idea over and over again," is never going to direct the superintendent to do any action. Um, so that's just a reminder. We do have sanctions available for board members who continue to violate the Board Code of Conduct, but my hope is that as professionals, I hope we can just take personal responsibility for monitoring our own behaviors. Um, I, I think the process we've gone through over and over and over again, so I really hope that, um, we'll just continue to, uh, uphold the standards that we've set for ourselves.
Thank you. Did any other board members have any comments, uh, to weigh in on Board Policy 9271?
Yeah. I don't hear what we're talking about. Um, can we have some clarity on, on the, is there an incident, or?
Sure.
Member Hildy? Yep.
Uh, well, Member Holloman, our, our board policy requires that if we have a personal concern with somebody, that you would go directly to the board president or that person. Um, so this is just a concern I've observed, and, um, I just want us to continue working on it. We've started working on it in the summer, and I hope that we, as a board, will continue to work on it, uh, following our board policy. So everybody has it available to review.
And that Code of Conduct is something that we sign every year, so we get refreshed every year on that.
Thank you, everyone. All right, moving on, we have Public Testimony Number Two. Katie, just to confirm that there's nobody else on that list, for the record?
For the record, there is no one else signed up.
Thank you. And, next to last on the agenda, School Board and Administration Comments. And Member Marsette, I see your hand up.
Of course. Uh, so I just want to give a shout out to, to all our principals and all of our teachers, but, um, I've been in correspondence with, um, David Nog over at Goldenview because my grandson's going to be attending there, and I have just been very pleased with the information that he has provided, uh, his students, and, uh, the ease of which he has explained everything, and I'm sure that all of our principals and everyone else is doing the same thing, but just a, a big shout out to him for all of his help and, uh, his, uh, communication with parents and students has been very clear, and, uh, to all our principals and, and teachers who are, um, I'm sure just as anxious as our students are about the first day. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donnelly, I see your hand raised?
No, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the standards we're using for opening schools or not, and that I agree with the Health and Social Services, that the, uh, threat matrix that was originally used by the ASD is, is not the appropriate standard for schools, standing alone. I did some research on this, uh, last week, and what other states are doing, and, um, first I started with the World Health Organization standard, and they, they've adopted a standard that schools should stay open if the infection rate, uh, of that region is less than 5%. Um, New York has adopted that standard for it as a state, so its schools are staying open because the infection rate in New York is below 5%. New York City has adopted a 3% standard, and, uh, you know, what a dense population they have in New York, so they adopted a 3% standard. But the current infection rate in New York is about 2%, so their schools are, are opening anyway, um, even though they have a lower than the World Health Organization standard than the state standard. And, um, our current rate of infection in Anchorage is about 0.8%, so that's, uh, about 1/6 of the standard that was adopted by, um, New York State, and less than half of the current rate that's in New York. And earlier this evening, the Washington, um, information was presented, and as, at least as to the infection rate standard, it was identified, and I was trying to take notes real quick, it looked like about either 1/8 or 1, 1.8 or 1.4, but either one of those would be, um, double what Anchorage currently has, and, uh, they're not closing their schools until they reach that level. So some states are using a different standard, and I, at this point, I'd say, I went to CDC, and CDC has not adopted a recommended standard for schools, but they did give a long list of, uh, factors that need to be considered. And if you look at the CDC factors, it really, uh, emphasizes that a lot of things, um, that are about Anchorage are different than other metropolitan areas. Uh, we do not have, uh, overly dense housing here. We don't have a subway, a largely used mass transit system. Um, we, we are not allowing large public events. I mean, those have been banned for months. You don't have giant groups of people getting together in concerts and things like that. And those all tend to mitigate the level, you know, whatever test that should be adopted. Uh, I had the, the opportunity last week to talk to Dr. Zink for about half an hour, and I, I, I raised these issues, and that's when she provided me with the newest information from Washington State, which is they, for schools, Washington State Department of Health has adopted a threat matrix that is based on both the CDC factors, but also has an actual numerical matrix, too. Their matrix is the low threat is 0 through 25 cases per 100,000. As you oppose that to our standard we've been using, is where 10 per 100,000 is a high risk. Their low-risk standard is 2 and 1/2 times higher than our high-risk standard. Between 25 and 75 is medium risk. In that period, they recommend that schools probably should be closed, but they also recommend, if at all possible, with mitigation tools, to try to keep the elementary students in class, because it's so important for them to have that face-to-face contact with their teachers. And they don't hit the high-risk level until they have over 75 per 100,000 cases, uh, in a rolling average. Alaska, um, you know, many states have adopted different ways of measuring that kind of a case count, new case count, but many of them are using the same as we are, and Washington State, which is that 14-day rolling average of new cases. So, with the information today, is our 14-day average is at 14, we'd still be in the low-risk category under Washington State, not even considering a lot of the mitigating factors we have that would make us in a less-risk circumstance than a city like Seattle, um, or, or a place like New York City. So under both the World Health Organization standards and the standards being adopted by other states based on case counts, and under the ad, advice from CDC, it's all got to be rolled together and considered, you know, because every community's separate. But, under all those standards, the current standard that we were using to close our schools, which was 10 cases, 14-day rolling average of 10 cases per 100,000, was extraordinarily low, uh, and lower than New York City, lower than Washington State, lower, I, I don't know, that, the, the example we were given earlier tonight, I hadn't had as much opportunity to do that research as that, so I, I'd like to really examine those numbers. But apples to apples, we're, we're, we're way low. Now, why is this really important to us? Well, because at some point in the next couple months, we're going to have to make a decision about whether to open schools again or not for the next quarter. So we have to really start considering what's appropriate for our community, and we need to get the best information we can to do that, and, and, and that's why I think it's, this is so important for the board to have all this information about what standards other, other states and communities are adopting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Member Marsette, I saw your hand up one more time?
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Donnelly's comments, um, and actually, I, I don't know that they're comments, they were things that he had already expressed in the board meeting, um, and maybe I'm wrong in saying, um, uh, you know, it, I don't know, it just didn't sound like a comment to me. It sounded like re, um, enforcing his statement that he made earlier, and so I, I really, and I'll let you decide, but I think this is more for comments at the end of the meeting on, uh, different things, but not to re, uh, support your, uh, position on something that you've already taken. So I feel like that this portion of the, the meeting is being, um, misused, and so I'm going to throw that out there. And, uh, Mr. Donnelly, I, we all get what you're saying, I'm going to tell you right now. Um, I agree that I think it's the superintendent's decision as to where we move forward, and she does take into consideration the community, the school board, and everyone else, and, um, that responsibility is on her shoulders, and, um, it's a huge responsibility in trying to keep our students, our staff, and everyone safe. And I'm glad that I don't have to be the sole person to make that decision, even though she has support, um, or, uh, guidance from everyone. So, um, although I appreciate your comments, I hear what, what you're saying, but I do think that you're using our comment period for a platform to reinforce your previous comments, or your previous positions.
Thank you. Member Mitchell, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I'm going to take this in a different direction, and I just want to say that, um, hearing Mr. Wheeler's and, um, all of the staff, um, the administrative staff, talk about, um, the amount of work that has gone into starting the school this fall, and really, when we, when the pandemic started in March, the focus in, in the spring was just getting through the school year, so there's been not a lot of time to put all these plans into place, and the hundreds of people who have worked on all of this, it's, I, I am very sad that we're starting remotely. It's not what anybody wants. I, when I think about kindergartners starting school remotely, it, it just makes my heart bleed a little bit. On the other hand, it is a tough decision, as Member Marsette just said, um, and I, I just so applaud everybody who has put hundreds and hundreds of hours into this, and, uh, I know, you know, the students are going to rise to the occasion, the teachers are going to rise to the occasion, all of our IT folks and, and curriculum folks have put so much into making sure that the platforms and the technology is going to work, getting, getting the devices into people's hands. I just really am grateful that we have a community that has done what they need to do, and, you know, maybe it is an overabundance of caution. It, I just encourage our entire greater community to think about the fact that this is not anybody's desire, this is not anybody's ideal, and if we want kids to be in school, let's all please do our part. And if we want kids to be in school, let's all please do our part and do what we can to, you know, keep that trend going down now so that we can get to where everybody wants to be, which is kids in school with their teachers, getting the best learning that they can. But again, I'm just so grateful to everybody who's stepping up to the plate and making a less than ideal situation work as well as they possibly can. And it is going to be successful and I'm looking forward to all of the learning that's going to happen. So thank you all.
Thank you. Member Bellamy, you have your hand raised?
I did, thank you. So I really did, I just wanted to say just a couple of comments. I want to welcome everybody back, our kids. Even though the staff didn't have a summer, welcome back to the grind. But it has not gone unnoticed, the work that you've done. I really appreciate Dr. Stock, your instructional time analysis, the sample schedules. I think that helps people see better in this new COVID instructional environment. So I really appreciate that. And as we, you know, as we continue to move forward, you know, we're all in this together and it's not just you, me, it's all of us. So we just have to move forward using our best thoughts, our best judgment and continuing to be supportive. So that's all I wanted to pretty much share.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands in the queue, I'm just going to take a quick opportunity myself. It's been very interesting as we roll into, you know, the day before back to school because I feel like we've been talking about back to school all summer long. And my board member hat, my mom hat, you know, has, you know, had some interesting, you know, nationations and growth over this summer. And here we are, two days before school starts with all of the information and the communications. And I can honestly say, I am looking forward as a board member and as a parent to getting kids back to school. That's after the challenging fourth quarter in the summer, they are going back to school in a capacity. And with, you know, I think, you know, a much better, you know, outlook, you know, than fourth quarter was. And so I'm looking forward to it. I'm, you know, proud of what's been done over the summer. I am looking forward to seeing it all roll out. We have great people on the ground that are, you know, going to do the very best they can. And so looking forward to it. Want to remind board members, our next regular meeting is September 8th. Following that meeting, just a few days after that, on Friday, September 11th, is our joint meeting with the Assembly. So just want people to kind of have some of these rolling dates going forward into this. And after we have our planning meeting tomorrow, I'll get with the board on, you know, potential options to talk about the funding resolution and some other ideas that'll come out about the agenda as well. So just wanted to throw that out there.
You see Dr. Bishop's hand?
Oh, I can't, I don't see her face, so I can't.
Sorry.
Nope, go ahead, Dr. Bishop.
I just wanted to say thank you for your support this evening as well. I just concur with your comments and in regard to just the support and just the tremendous amount of work and dedication of employees and as well as parents. And, you know, I appreciate your comments, member Marsette. And I'm just going to share that, I think there, I am happy to share Washington. I sent some information, I concurred with it. We are right in line with Washington. It's just that the manner in which they, they take the number of cases per 100,000 over 14 days. We take the number of cases per day, the mean over 14 days. So we're just, again, we're just really stretching some things. Seattle Public Schools announced they're also online. So each state is struggling with these questions, the unknowns. You know, Mr. Donley commented that cities are different than the rest of the states. And then every city is different, and that's just so true. But we really are using the knowledge and the expertise of the people on the ground to design programs as well as the knowledge and expertise of our medical community to guide us through this school year and the start of it. And so I'm happy to sit with anyone or Jennifer Petronas's to share those data and just to understand more where the numbers come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. All right, member Donley, you got your hand up one more time? I want to give you that space, but I want to make sure we don't get into a back and forth, especially, you know, with the offer to have clarifying details from the administration. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't intend to talk again, but I just want to state for the record, I totally disagree with member Marsette's comments about limiting free speech of board members during the comment period.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands. And so I think I'm going to go ahead and just unanimously or just adjourn this meeting and tell everybody to have a great night and a great back to school this week. And, you know, have a wonderful evening, folks. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night, Nora.